Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole meeting for December the 7th, 2015. And I would like to ask for approval of the agenda, including two additional new business on the yellow pieces of paper. Moved by Counselor Parkinson, seconded by Counselor Loggins. Any discussion on the agenda? All those in favor? Carried. Okay. And the first thing up on the agenda is a presentation by Western Canada Marine Response Corp., Oil Spill Geographic Response Strategies for the District of Souk, Michael Lowery, Manager of Communications.
Excuse me, Your Worship, were you not going to make an introduction first?
So, tonight, we have an announcement for the members of the public and the press and anybody in the District of Souk that we have employed a new CIO for the District of Souk who has joined us tonight, and she's sitting beside Mr. Dillabah. Her name is Teresa Sullivan. So, welcome to Souk, Ms. Sullivan.[84.36][84.36][applause] There is a press release that we will send out with our media people tonight. So, welcome, Ms. Sullivan, to the District of Souk. Thank you, thank you. So, now, Mr. Lowery, we can have you up there. How's that?
Yeah, thank you. So, yes, my name is Michael Lowery. I'm the Communications Manager with Western Canada Marine Response Corporation, also known as WCMRC, which is a bit of an awkward acronym, but it is what it is. So, today, what I'd like to talk about, there's really sort of four things I'd like to cover off today. The first is the Canadian spill response regime as it exists currently and as it applies to the West Coast. And then I'll look at some of the changes that are coming to that regime. I think it's no secret that there's a distinct lack of confidence in the public on spill response, on the West Coast in particular. So, I'd like to look at what Transport Canada is doing to sort of shift the conversation and put some new regulations into place around spill response. Then I'd like to look at what our role as an organization is and how we fit into that Transport Canada regime. And then the third piece there is some coastal mapping work that we're undertaking right now, work that's going on the coastline in Souk and around the Vancouver Island. And then the third piece, or sorry, the fourth piece, is looking at what would change for us if the Trans Mountain Project went ahead, which is where a lot of the concern is in terms of increasing in tanker traffic along that southern shipping route, which goes right past your doorstep there. So, first, going back, a little bit of a history lesson here. Our organization dates back to 1976, and that organization started in Burrard in Vancouver. At the time, it was really a membership organization that was started by the four major oil companies that had terminals in Vancouver, as well as the pipeline company. And they all separately had their own spill response assets, which they pooled together to form this co-op called Burrard Clean. And that really was only an organization that looked at spills within Vancouver. So, the rest of the coast was pretty much unprotected. That all changed in 89 with the Exxon Valdez incident. That triggered a sort of some soul-searching on behalf of the Canadian government, as well as the American government. And what they did is they commissioned a fellow named Brander Smith to look into Exxon and to draft some recommendations on how to improve the current system. So, the report that Brander Smith releases in 1990 has some 200 recommendations, and they really kind of fall into two buckets. There's the tanker safety prevention side, which is around the double hulls, requirements for tankers to have double hulls, the requirement for them to have escort tugs and local BC pilots, and the new requirements around navigational aids. And then the second bucket is the response side. So, if there is a spill, how do we go about cleaning it up? So, he recommended creating an organization that was industry-funded but regulated by the government. And that's what was put into place. So, all his recommendations were pretty much adopted and put into the Canada Shipping Act. And when that happens in 1993, then spill response becomes a federal jurisdiction, and it's all governed by the Shipping Act, with Transport Canada kind of leading the regime there. So, on the spill response side, now, if you want to be a spill response organization, you must be certified by Transport Canada. So, it's a three-year cycle to go through that process. So, Burrard Clean, which previously only looked at Burrard Inlet, goes through that certification cycle, comes out the other end as a new entity called WCMRC, and now our jurisdiction is the entire coast of B.C., all 27,000 kilometers. Now, those regulations that come in in 95 pretty much remain unchanged for the next 20-some years until the Tanker Safety Panel Report comes out in 2013, and I'll go into that in a bit of detail here. So, the regime that's set up in 93, there's roles and responsibilities for a number of different agencies. First and foremost is Transport Canada. They're in charge of the regime, and they're in charge of certifying response organizations. So, I mentioned it's a three-year cycle. We demonstrate through exercises, both tabletop and on-water deployment exercises to Transport Canada, that we are capable of meeting the standards that they have set out. The next entity there, and a very important one, is the Coast Guard. The Coast Guard does have capacity to respond to small spills. So, they do have boom, they have skimming equipment, and they have absorbent pads. So, if a small vessel capsizes, they do have ability to clean that up. They're also responsible for leading cross-border exercises. Obviously, if there's a spill between the Canadian and American borders, there requires a cooperative response. So, the Canadian and U.S. Coast Guards exercise that program every two years, and that's a treaty that goes back to the mid-'70s. And probably their most important role is what's called the Federal Monitoring Officer. So, under the regime, a polluter, it's a polluter pay model, so the polluter must pay for the response, but they also must manage the response and manage the cleanup. A lot of people say that's a potentially conflict of interest, and that's what that role of the Coast Guard is. So, they're observing the response, how it's being handled. If they don't think it's being handled properly, they have the authority, they have the mandate to step in and take control of the operation. Next, we have the science partners. So, we have Environment Canada, B.C. Ministry of Environment, and DFO. And what they're doing is providing us with the science behind spills and providing advice on cleanup measures. So, you hear a lot about diluted bitumen or dilbit. Does it sink? Does it float? Environment Canada does a lot of work looking into that, what we call the fate and behavior. They released a report on how it behaves in the marine environment, and they're working on some reports now on how it behaves on the shoreline. And then during a spill, we look to these bodies to help us identify sensitivities on the shore. So, which beaches should we be protecting first? Which beaches are potentially more in danger? Which ones are more valuable in terms of the resources that might be at risk? So, we look to those entities to help us out with making those decisions. Then finally, the response organizations. There's four in Canada. We are the only one on the West Coast, but there's another three on the East Coast. So, we're developing response plans, and we're doing our exercises. So, this map here shows you what the existing response times are according to the Canada Shipping Act. So, this is what we have to be able to meet to maintain our certification. And you'll notice right away that they're pretty lenient, and I would say very out-of-date. So, if you're looking in the green zone here, that's Port Metro's jurisdiction. It's what's called a designated port. It's the only one on the West Coast. And in that green area, we have a six-hour window to respond to a spill. We get a lot of criticism for that within lower mainland. People say that six hours is ridiculous. We agree. We didn't set the six hours. Our actual response time, our average response time in that area, is one hour over the past 10 years. But that six-hour window is what we have to prove to Transport Canada that we can maintain. So, as you go into the red zone, you're getting into 12, 18-hour response times. And as you get into the blue zone there, which is where Souk is located, we're looking at a 18, 72-hour response time, depending on the size of the spill. Again, those times are pretty out-of-date and kind of ridiculous. So, we'll talk a little bit later about where we have equipment to, obviously, we're well below those standards, but these are the standards that Transport Canada sets. So, we talked about the changes to that. So, those response times do need to come down. Transport Canada recognizes that. And so, they've commissioned a report that came out in 2013, looking at ways to improve and to change the system. And we had a lot of input into this report, and one of the things that we were pushing for is response times that reflect the risk of a given area. And they heard that recommendation, and they did incorporate that into their regime review. And so, what you're looking at now is a map that shows where the highest risks are on the West Coast of Canada. And not surprisingly, it is that southern shipping route. So, there is about 6,000 transits per year for the southern shipping lane. Ships are coming in and out of Port Metro, Vancouver, down by turnpoint here, around Race Rocks, and then they exit with someplace called Jayboy or Juliet Boy, right here on this western side. So, that is where, right now, the traffic is heaviest. Now, what's also good about this is that there's a mechanism for review. So, they're going to do this planning process in every three- or four-year cycle. So, if, let's say, in three or four years, you have a lot of LNG projects going up north, that would trigger new risks up in the northern zone, so you'd see new hot zones, and that's going to trigger them to input new response times. So, we're a fan of this model. It's going to take them a couple of years to change to that, but we do advocate strongly for this is the right direction for the country to move. So, in terms of where we do have equipment, we've got three bases. So, the triangles are where we have bases with personnel. So, on the lower mainland, it's in Burnaby. Here on the island, we have a warehouse base in Duncan, and then up in Prince Rupert. The orange dots are where we have equipment caches. That could be a vessel or could be a trailer with boom and skimming equipment. And the way we operate is we rely quite a bit on contractors or what we call remote responders in those locations. So, if there's a spill in that area, we would task them with going to open that can or activate that vessel while we're mobilizing from one of those other bases where we have personnel. In terms of funding, the Shipping Act actually stipulates which types of vessels must have an arrangement with a response organization. So, what that looks like is any vessel over 400 tons, no matter what its carry, no matter what its purpose is. If it's calling on a Canadian port, it must have an arrangement with a spill response organization. If that vessel's purpose is to carry oil, then it's a lower threshold. If it's over 150 gross tons, then it has to have an arrangement with us as well. So, that includes all the barges that transit back and forth between the lower mainland and Vancouver Island. And then the other piece there is the oil handling facility. So, anytime oil's going from the land to the marine side, they must have an arrangement with a spill response organization. So, that could be the big guys like Kinder Morgan, or it could be a small fishing lodge where they have to refuel the fishing vessel. So, it crosses the entire spectrum there. We also have what we call subscribers, and those are organizations that by law don't necessarily have to have an arrangement, but they recognize it as good business, and so they have that arrangement. An example of that would be Harbor Air, so they've got fuel, but they don't fall under the Canada Shipping Act. So, if you put all that money together, we have an operating budget of around $8 to $9 million per year. So, snapshot of our equipment. So, we have a fleet of 32 vessels spread out around the coast, including seven barges. What you're looking at in that picture there is a 4,000-ton barge, so it can hold oil that we've recovered, but also operates as a work platform. So, there's equipment onboard, but also sea cans that can be outfitted for accommodations or as a command post. So, that will be towed out to a large spill and would act as the main base for that operation. In terms of assets around Vancouver Island, we do have four vessels right in Victoria. They were previously at Esqai Mount. We've since moved them to Point Hope. We do have three vessels at our main base in Duncan there. There's Boom in Ukulit, Hatch Point, Couch and Bay. We have a vessel in Nanaimo, right by the seaplane terminal there. We do have a barge in Port Alberti, and then we have equipment in Port Hardy and Campbell River. So, this column here is looking at what those Shipping Act requirements are for us dating back to the early '90s. So, you can see right away that we've moved since past those regulations. So, we've got more than double the requirements in boom, and it's quite apparent here in terms of the skimming capacity that we've moved far past that requirement. So, in terms of skimming, we measure that in tons per hour. So, that's how many tons of oil we have to remove from the water in one hour. So, requirement for the whole coast is 27 tons. We can do 468. So, it just shows you kind of how outdated those requirements are. In fact, one of our vessels or one of our skimmers would easily capture that number right there. So, this coastal mapping project is really what triggered this conversation here today. When the province started talking about world-class spill response, they never really qualified or quantified what that meant. So, we did some soul-searching internally, and we started looking at other jurisdictions around the world, some of the big guys like Norway, Australia, U.K., Washington, Alaska. And we picked some pieces that they were doing that we weren't doing and brought them into our program. The one that we really liked is coastal mapping. So, this was pioneered by the Washington Department of Ecology down south. And the idea is that ahead of a spill, you can go out and you can map the coastline, you can determine which of your resources would be at risk if there's a spill, whether it's biological, ecological, cultural, or human use or economic sites. And so, we've engaged a company out of Campbell River to lead this project. So, we fed them the existing data, which comes from Environment Canada and BCMOE, and they're building it into a digital mapping program, which has an ESRI base. And so, what you're looking at here is kind of the first layer of that process. This is, you're looking at Pender Island. So, the blue circles are economic sensitivities. The orange circles are cultural sensitivities. So, that could be a burial site or a historical clam midden. And then the green zones are, green circles are biological or ecological concerns. So, once that first step is done, the next step is we actually go out and ground-truth that information. We bring a registered biologist and a registered archaeologist with us. So, in this step, we're actually verifying that that information is still accurate, and then we're putting boom in the water to actually protect that particular sensitivity. Once that's done, that information goes back into this mapping program, and now all those yellow dots correspond to what we call a response strategy. So, if you are looking at this and you pull this up on your iPad, you can click on any one of those dots, and this response strategy pops up right away. And this is what that response strategy looks like. So, here is the GRS for Peter's Cove on Pender Island. And you can see that the resource that was at risk is a First Nation concern or a marine mammal concern, or actually, sorry, both. And then the red lines are where the boom would be deployed to protect this sensitivity. The dots are where we put the anchor kits down, so the actual Latin long is there because we've ground-truth that information. So, we know when we're putting an anchor kit down, we're not dropping it into eelgrass or some other sensitivity. And then down here, you have the amount of equipment in terms of personnel, feet of boom, vessels that you would need to deploy this strategy. And this information can go and produce a work order in ICS, which is the Incident Command System, which your fire chief uses. It's all emergency planners use during an emergency. So, this would feed right into that ICS system. The second page is just more logistical information, who to call, you know, are there gates that we need to access to get onto the property? That's all captured in this second page here. Now, in terms of the Trans Mountain Project, they also looked at those Shipping Act standards that we talked about earlier, the 72 hours, which is, you know, quite a long period of time, and recognized that that wouldn't really cut it for that project. So, they proposed significantly lower response times. So, they talked about a two-hour response time, where it used to be six. And for this entire southern shipping route, they proposed a six-hour response time. So, that's quite a bit of a decrease from the Canada Shipping Act. And then what they did is they came to us and they said, "No, if you guys needed to meet these response times, what would you need in terms of personnel and equipment and new bases?" So, we've put together a proposal that was part of their facilities application. We're still kind of working through the details of that, but roughly what it means is a number of new response bases. So, we have that facility in Burnaby. We'd be adding a second base in Steveston there, probably potentially in the Delta Port area. On the island, we'd be putting a pretty significant facility, it'd be the main hub base for the island, up in Nanaimo, and we're working with the port there. Something in the Sanich Peninsula area, possibly in Sydney somewhere, something in the Victoria area, most likely something in Beecher Bay, and we're working with the band to make that happen in their new marina. Something in Port Alberti, and it looks kind of like it's far inland, but there's a significant infrastructure there for us. But we would have a rapid response base in Ukulit as well, and potentially something in Port Renfrew. We'd have to see about that. And then the final piece is what we're calling community packages, and that would be cans that have equipment and gear that the communities are trained to use if they'd like to during an incident. And this would be especially something that the Gulf Islands are quite keen on because they do it down in San Juan. So, we've heard that the Gulf Island communities would be very keen on a program like that. So, if you put that together, this is what the new model would look like. You're looking at now what areas would be covered off by a six-hour response in blue, and that's based on a very conservative travel time of 10 knots per hour. Some of our vessels, our fast-response vessels, actually can go twice that fast, about 20 knots per hour, so that's a significantly larger area. We've included down in the States, the area down in the States that we've covered off as well, but obviously, we'd have to get permission before going down there. But if we were at task to assist in this response in the States, we could quite easily cover that area in a small time as well. And then the purple area is the area that we cover by a two-hour response time. In terms of the response-based design, these aren't massive facilities, about staff of 10 to 25 people. You're looking at primarily, the primary concern in terms of finding appropriate locations is moorage. So, you look at a rapid-response vessel, boom vessel, and this vessel here would be a new vessel for us. It's a large ocean supply vessel, would be likely stationed in the Beecher Bay area. So, just in terms of growth, what that would mean for us, we currently have a staff of around 50 people, probably be at 60 people by the end of this year. We would need to add another 90 to 100 people to meet Trans Mountain's enhancements there. So, that'd be huge growth for us, especially because a lot of those will have to come from the marine community. And that's really it for the presentation side. Maybe went a bit over in terms of what I was hoping for, but I'm open to questions or comments from Counsel.
Thank you for your presentation, and I guess it's a very, very passionate issue for us in Souk. You know, hopefully, you know, I guess the good news and the bad news is that, you know, there is plans in place, and the bad news is that hopefully, you know, hopefully it's not an indicator. So, I'm going to turn it over to the other counselors for questions, but thank you for your presentation.
Yep.
So, what you've outlined is a proposal to actually deal with the current situation and the tanker traffic that exists now and the marine traffic through the Straits of Wanda Fuka and through the Sailor Sea area?
Yeah, well, there's really three pieces there. There's the Transport Canada Initiative, which would move us to a planning model based on risk, which will go ahead regardless of whether Trans Mountain moves ahead as a project. That could be three or four years before we see what that new model looks like. The third piece there is our own initiative, which is the Coastal Mapping Project, which is the GRS, is the booming, and that. And that's something that we've initiated a couple of years ago, and we'll be continuing to do. It's a program that will exist basically forever, and eventually, the goal is to have the entire coast mapped. We are focusing initially on that southern route, so that's our own initiative. And then the third piece is the Trans Mountain proposal for new equipment and bases, which would only happen if that project went ahead.
So, my other question, it relates to, so your locations for any new facility locations or bases, Beecher Bay and Port Renfrew. So, Souk isn't included in that mix. Is that, is the reason because of the distance and the geographic location?
No. Souk and Beecher Bay were really two ideal locations for us very early on in the process. Souk got removed from the equation because the draft just wouldn't allow our vessels to come in and out of the bay, basically, was it came down to. So, that's what caused us to look at Beecher Bay. And also, Beecher Bay is just a bit more sheltered in terms of moorage. So, it was, basically, it was too shallow in Souk.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Are there any revisions being proposed for the Canadian Shipping Act in its totality? Because the response times that they have laid out seem ludicrous. I mean, it's nice to hear that you're superseding them and you're getting it done away faster, but is there a proposal for revisions with the Canadian Shipping Act, or?
Well, that's what hopefully the new risk assessment model will trigger that. So, they'll say, "Okay, look, around Race Rocks, that's kind of a high danger zone. Let's bring that response time from where it is now down to five, six, whatever they decide." So, hopefully, that new approach, the risk-based approach, will trigger changes to those response times.
Thank you.
So, where else are you making these presentations at?
So, my role, and I work with an Aboriginal Relations Advisor, our new positions with the organization, it's sort of doing that public information thing, is not something the organization's done before. And so, we started this year, it was the first time we'd done this, and we started up in Nanaimo, and we've been working our way down. So, we're doing all coastal communities along the southern shipping route, and the goal is to get that through this year.
So, for all your locations that you have, like Esqai Mount and Up Island, are they all manned, or are they all on call, like, for fire or something like that, for the people to come in?
Yeah. So, the way it looks is, right now, we're on call 24/7, but we don't actually have operations, you know, sitting in boats on the water 24 hours a day. And I didn't mention that, but that's part of the Trans Mountain proposals. We would, a number of those bases would have operations, people sitting there 24 hours a day. So, we're on call 24/7, we'll respond 24/7, but we're not actually sitting in the warehouse. So, the only place that there is personnel on the island is in Duncan, but there's other locations where we have contractors.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to note, so would Souk qualify for one of those cans that you described, where there's up-to-date buoy-type equipment?
Potentially, yeah. So, I actually, I've met with Chief Sorensen several months back, talking exactly about this, and I believe Souk actually has a can of boom that maybe is a bit out-of-date. But potentially, yes. What we're hearing from emergency planners in particular is they get that if there's a big spill, that we would be the guys to clean it up. What they're a lot more concerned about is some of the smaller stuff that falls between the cracks. So, those cans could potentially be used in those situations. So, yeah, there is definitely room for one of those cans to be here. That's an option, yeah. But I have to say, you'd be well-covered by what's going on in Beecher Bay. I mean, that's going to be a significant base for us, and you're quite close. But there is options for a can here. Great, thank you.[1598.61][1598.61][applause]
Okay, thank you. Next up is the presentation by Royal Roads University Master of Tourism Management Program. And tonight, we have Brian White, Director of School of Tourism and Hospitality.
Worship, I'm sorry to interrupt, but there is usually public input after a presentation.
Oh, sorry. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Sorry, I didn't put my glasses on. Sorry, I apologize. Yes, now, there's an opportunity, sorry, I did miss that. Opportunity for public input, sorry, thank you.
Okay, Jeff Bateman, thank you very much for coming today. There's a lot of very positive plans for the future. It's all conditional, partially conditional, on the National Energy Board's approval of this twinning of the Trans Mountain Pipeline. So, I guess until that happens, we'll continue to be faced with an 18- to 72-hour response time. Is that correct in this region?
Yeah, so, again, those are the planning standards under the Canada Shipping Act. We have assets right in Victoria, which means it's never going to be that much of a time to spend here, but that is currently the Canada Shipping Act standards.
Okay.
So, those will change potentially with the area response plans? But right now, yes, that is the operating.
And I guess we're in a period of quite a dramatic change at the moment, given that today in Paris, our federal Environment and Climate Change Minister committed to a 1.5 degrees Celsius limit on temperature change, and that would potentially require some very dramatic action, including stopping all fossil fuel extraction projects. So, anyway, thank you for coming tonight.
Any other members of the public that would like to speak? Thank you.
Hi, my name's Larissa Sandy. I'm the Climate and Energy Campaigner for Sierra Club B.C. Thank you for having me here today. I had a couple of quick questions. One about your mapping project. Are you doing active, you mentioned you're Aboriginal Relations Advisor. I'm just wondering, in identifying those zones of ecological, economic, and indigenous or cultural heritage, are you, I'm curious about the consultation process that you're engaging First Nations in.
Sure, we can share. I got a couple of questions.
Yeah, no, we definitely are. I'll give you an example of that process. So, with Laaxin on the eastern side, we actually had the chief come out with us in one of those ground-screwing operations, and he was able to point out some historical clam mittens. And the key thing for the First Nations was that we were very generic in how we described those places, so that we weren't describing a place as a cultural sensitivity, which would flag people to maybe go to that site and sort of pillage potentially. So, we're working very closely with them in terms of how we identify those sites and how they're captured. So, what we do is, once we do identify all those G's, we take that information back, sit down with that map, and say, "Have we captured everything in this area?" down with that map, and say, have we captured everything in this area? And then they're able to input into that process.
Great, and those are going to be publicly available?
Good question. Not now, because of this concern. But there are going to be some that are available through different planning processes. So for example, in the Broad Inlet area, Coast Guard is working on an integrated plan there, and we would make those documents for that area available through that process. Eventually, potentially through the larger ERP process, there might be maps attached to that, and that's publicly available, but the public is not going to have a password to access that program.
No, but in terms of a broader consultation process, in case there are areas that are of significance that are not necessarily identified by a singular, there might be some space, is what I'm asking.
Yeah, no, no good point. We're working right now, this year, we're targeting emergency planners, First Nations, and sort of elected officials, but we're probably going to have to start going a little bit deeper into some of the conservancies that exist within the Gulf Islands, so.
Very good, okay. I was also curious about, you know, I've read some reports about the days it was actually possible in terms of weather to respond to an incident. Can you respond to that for me, please?
Yeah, that's a really good question. So the spill response equipment, and this is an international issue, I guess, but really becomes less effective in sea states over four or five. So basically, as soon as you start to be significant whitecaps, the oil can go over or potentially under the boom, and also your skimming equipment is going to be less effective. That doesn't mean you're stopping the operation, but definitely sea states are an issue.
Well, the report that I read, which was evidence to the Trans Mountain Kinder Morgan review, also, I can't remember exactly how many days, but I recall that it was fewer than forty days, and a lot of those areas were seventy-two hour response zones, and there were fewer days that they could actually even access it, never mind responding to lay booms, there were very few days they could even access it to get out there to deal with this. So seventy-two hours is maybe even a best-case scenario for a lot of these places where the weather is extreme.
Yeah, no, I think you're, you're definitely right. The west coast is a far harder beast than the east side, that's, that's, there's no doubt about it. Yeah.
I guess my final point was, what percentage of spill recovery is considered a success by your organization?
Yeah, good. Okay, so the question is around how much is considered a success. There, there are numbers out there, and these are historical numbers, so they're based on actual spills, of around ten to fifteen percent, okay? So first, there's a couple of things to look at there. First of all, all product has an evaporation rate of between twenty-five, thirty percent. So when, when oil spills, you're going to only be able to get X amount to begin with. The rates of around ten to fifteen percent are open water spills, which are typically a lot lower, and that's not because you're not getting that product, it's dissipating into the water column and it's evaporating. So those are the things you have to deal with, especially it's going to take longer to get there, and there's, there's more stuff going on. In sheltered conditions, like let's say on the east side or in Broad Inlet, we've had success rates of up to eighty, ninety percent. So it's going to depend on the product, it's going to depend on the weather, it's going to depend on, on, on the time of use, a lot of issues there, yeah.
Thank you very much for your responses. Dissipating into the water column, obviously, it's not something that can be recovered, but I don't think that's a good answer, good enough answer for me anyways, that ten, fifteen percent is an acceptable rate of success. I also just am astounded, in general, that this is still being considered as, I, I appreciate that spill response is an important thing to be considering, but I actually do believe that this is not an acceptable level of risk, but thank you very much for your.
Yeah, no problem. Just, just one final comment there, and I appreciate those, those concerns. That is just the reality of the, of spill response and the equipment that exists, right?
Exactly.
But I think the, first of all, our organization is not a proponent or an opponent of, of , of projects, of Kinder Morgan or any other project. We exist to clamp spills when they happen. And I think as much as the focus has been on some, on, on, on large vessels, there's a real and immediate concern with existing shipping traffic. There's six thousand vessels that go past here on, on a yearly basis. The product that's in there to fuel those vessels bunker is, is not a pleasant product, and, and that's, and those, those vessels present a far higher risk than, than, than the tankers. The tankers don't keep us up at night because there's so many measures around them. It's more all the other container vessels are going past with bunker that could potentially be a huge issue on the coast. So existing shipping traffic is, to me, is, is really the real and present danger.
Thank you.
Thank you, and I would totally appreciate that. My concern is obviously for expanding infrastructure like Kinder Morgan, Trans Mountain. And that said, I have some information out front, if people wanted to have a conversation afterwards about the risks presented by the stuff that does evaporate, like benzene and whatnot, because they present a real, really substantial health risk. Thank you.
Thank you. So we have another member of the public, I think, behind you there, so. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Gail Armitage, I'm the team leader for Dogwood Initiative here in Suk. I thank you very much for your presentation, it was, it was interesting, and I was appreciative that you are actually trying to improve the response times now, even if Kinder Morgan doesn't go ahead. I'm assuming you're still going to try and get better response times, given your concerns over bunker, bunker fuel and that kind of thing. I guess my, my concern is with the ten percent, ten to fifteen percent recovery rate over, over some of this product, and the, the fact that you're talking about evaporation, and evaporation means spreading over the, through the air, and Suk is very low to the water here. Benzene, as we know, is a, is a very, very significant health risk because it causes cancer, and we would be right in the line of fire of that kind of thing. So I'm not talking about, you know, I, I'm definitely opposed, or we are definitely opposed to Kinder Morgan expanding significantly, the number, for a variety of reasons, including marine safety for the mammals, mammals are, are at risk now, including orcas, and to have a sevenfold increase in traffic probably means they would become extinct in the, in the southern regions of this area. So for a lot of different reasons, we oppose that, but, but I'm also extremely concerned with, with the dangers that we are in right now, so I'm happy that at least you're trying to improve the, the response times, to make it even possible to deal with some of the stuff that might happen before even we consider Kinder Morgan expansion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, benzene is a terrible, terrible product. The only thing I can really say on that is, is our responders, obviously, it's, their, their health and safety is number one when we respond, and we're not going to send them into a zone that's, that potentially there's benzene. So when we respond to spills, the first step is not only do, do a health and safety meeting, but the next step is when they go into the site where the, where the spill is, they've got air quality monitors that they're using to detect benzene. And we did respond to dilutive vitamin spill, a hundred tons in Broad Inlet in, in two thousand and seven, and our responders were there within half an hour, and they tested for benzene, and they, they did not find it. It evaporates so quickly in the marine environment that it just wasn't there when, when, when we happened. But what you have to be concerned about is pockets of benzene that may get into, you know, potentially into communities. So you, you want to engage the health authorities right away in the incident command system, so they're able to deploy air quality monitors within the community. So that is, that is a real concern. But in spills we've responded to, it's, it's evaporated, it hasn't been there when we've, when we've arrived, so.
Good evening, Captain Ralph, from beautiful downtown Suk. What we're dealing with here is a small detail about the big picture. The big picture is, why do we get ourselves involved with this kind of activity, anyway? It's, it's pretty audacious that Kinder Morgan would, a year or so later, do a presentation here before the same council, that the last time they were here was the exact time at In English Bay in Vancouver, a spill happened out of a, out of a ship. And the response for there made all kinds of headlines as to what's going on? Don't we have an organization here to deal with this? And the guy here, representing Kinder Morgan, sometime last spring, was talking about this, that we have this organization to attack spills. What a nightmare that became. So your credibility is really zilch. And here, the thing is, for you to recognize that there's going to be spills, it's good to prepare for in case there is, but in my experience, there will be. So there's no question about it, it's just when it's going to happen, and what do you do to be prepared for it? So it's, it's good that you're giving thought to it, but your record is horrible. So how are we in Suk here in Long Wanda Fuga Strait going to think, oh, we gotta, we gotta welcome this oil business and tankers and all kinds of stuff? That doesn't give me a very good feeling. I'm in my elder years now, but I have kids, and then they'll have kids, and as this place goes, we don't want to mess it up. And there's any chance at all, why don't we just not do it? Now, I'm, I'm speaking negatively here about the oil industry and about your business. We have to switch this around, we got to leave that oil in the ground, quit doing these pipelines, quit doing all this oil crap. It's just, there's a dead end to it. So we look at sustainable kind of, we have to give our efforts that way, and big oil companies ought to be doing that. And I want to say this about the Texas company you represent. Down in Texas, they, we don't have capital punishment here in Canada like they do down there. And I've always thought that people who represent major projects should put their life on the line, sign the dotted line, that if this happens, I'll give it up. But we, since we don't have capital punishment in Canada, what I would suggest is that you dedicate a year of your life every day down there cleaning up that crap. Okay, I can appreciate your comments, but keep them a little more civil than that, please, just please. Okay, and? Okay. They made, they made a presentation as the oil response, they're not Kinder Morgan, they're not, they're not the big Texas oil company, they're, they're. But doesn't Kinder Morgan own half of that? Fifty percent of this company is, is Kinder Morgan?
Forty-nine.
Isn't that true? Kinder Morgan is involved, aren't they? And those are Texas guys, Mr. Kinder, Mr. Morgan, they're from Texas. This is British Columbia. Okay, I just asked you to keep your comments a little more civil than, civil, than, than. Geez, I thought I was being pretty nice. Yes, yes, you are, thank you. I really did. Okay, well, it's good you recognize the big picture, that, that this is possibly going to happen. Send the message to your headquarters and, and their owners, get out of here. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Where to begin? First, first of all, yes, it's true, we have, our shareholders are Kinder Morgan, they're, they're our shareholders. We write them a dividend check every year in the tens of thousands of dollars. Their membership dues, which are legally required them to pay are in the millions of dollars, they're not, this is not a profit-making enterprise for them. I do not work for Kinder Morgan, I work for WCMRC. Our, our staff, our windsurfers, their fishermen, their sailors, we, we live on this coast as well. We're not just cleaning up tanker spills, we clean up spills from vessels that are carrying grain to and from the coast, we clean up spills from barges that are carrying fuel to Vancouver Island from the lower mainland, we clean up spills from ferries in the north, so that's a little bit off-base, respectfully. The second piece there, and I think, I feel we do have to defend ourselves here, is around English Bay. There was an independent report that came out, and we found that our involvement in that spill was flawless, okay? We were activated at eight o'clock that night, we were in English Bay ninety minutes later. You saw that, that we had a six-hour response time, our response time was eighty minutes. We had the oil off the water in eighteen hours. The operation for the English Bay spill, we had, there was no issue with that operation. The issue is around how long it took to actually call us. If they called us when this spill had happened, we wouldn't be having this conversation, no one would know about this spill. So it was not our response that was causing the problem there, it was until we got activated. So just like to put that out there as a response to some of your, your points. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Steve Unger. I'm a father of two little kids who absolutely adore the ocean and would like to keep it the way it is. I appreciate your presentation very much, but I think you're focusing on the wrong metric. Everything I hear about talks about response times going down and response times increasing. I really don't care about the response time. If you're still leaving eighty-five or ninety percent of the oil left there, I don't care if it takes you two hours, twenty hours, two hundred hours, that's still absolutely ridiculous. If there was a sewage spill in Suk, and we went to everyone and said, listen, sorry, we only got ninety, or, we only got ten percent of it, ninety percent of it's still left in the street, we did our best, you know, we're out of here, that would be absolutely outrageous. No one would put up for that. So my first request is, please stop talking about response time and start talking about percentage of oil that you're actually recovering. My second request is, please, think about what you're doing here. You're now going to increase, I think it's tenfold, the amount of oil transiting down through here, and yet I haven't heard anything to say that the actual percentage of oil that you'll be able to clean up if something happens has gone up. The response time certainly has, but the percentage hasn't. So could you please talk to that, those couple of requests a little bit? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so again, I'll reiterate that WCMRC is not increasing tanker traffic on the coast. We are responding to spills if they happen on the coast. That is our mandate, that is what the government has tasked us to do, okay? The second piece is around how much is recovered, and to be honest, that is, that is a question that has a lot of moving parts. I'm probably not the best person to talk to that. We can't control how much, what happens to the oil and marine environment, that is just, that is science. That is something that Environment Canada should, should come and talk to you about, and I would encourage that conversation to happen. What WCMRC can control is how fast we get to a spill, okay? So those are why we talk about those numbers. What, what is going to increase the rate of this recovery is how fast you get to that spill. So that's something we can control. Where the spill happens, what type of product it is, what the weather is that day, all of those things that influence how much you can recover, we can't control those things. So that's why we don't speak to those things. We speak to how fast we can arrive on scene, okay?
Thank you. Is there any other members of the public that would like to speak? Hearing none, I, I just want to, I want to, I want to thank you for, for making the presentation, but I want to, I want to reiterate again how passionate the people of Suk are about our coastline and our, so, you know, the, yes, we can appreciate, I, I think you heard loud and clear, we can appreciate response times and, and that there is a cleanup effort that will take place, and there is an organization responsible for that, but, you know, underlying there is, is, is the issues that, that come through loud and clear. And so I think, I think the message was, was, was loud and clear tonight. Thank you. So next on our agenda tonight is the presentation of Royal Roads University Master of Tourism, and Brian White, Director of School of Tourism and Hospitality.
Thank you very much. Well, now for something completely different. This particular presentation is focused on the downtown Suk, and I think what we start with is a bit of a discussion about the, what we call an MOU, Memorandum of Understanding, which was signed by Dr. Stephen Grundy, who's sitting here somewhere. Where do you go? Oh, there you are, yes, right, who happens to be my boss. And the issue was, what could be done, what could Royal Roads do to actually take a look at what structure could be accomplished in developing the downtown core? And I noticed that the, the roundabout is in, right? And people are driving around it, but not all necessarily in organized fashion, right? So this is a good step forward. So that's a great, great thing, and I appreciate and recognize the instruction pamphlets which the council has put out to provide direction on how to use the roundabout, which I think is a good idea. So what I'm going, we're going to talk about today, and I'm going to sit down and be quiet most of this, we're going to talk about a particular theme about what this particular could, place could be in terms of tourism. And it starts off with a quote saying, "A great place to live is a great place to visit." Okay? So we put the residents first. That's really important, I think it's absolutely critical thing with any kind of place. We want to talk about what your ideas, what the community's idea is in terms of vision, what the sense of place is, what does it feel like to be in Suk, what does Suk mean? And that is the brand. If you talk about Tofino, as we will hear in a little while, they have a brand, it's Tofino. You know what, we said Tofino, yeah, Tofino, you know what that is. Well, what about Suk? What does it look like? Amenities, what have you got here? I live in East Suk, on the, what was referred to as the dark side. And we look back across at Suk where it is lit up and of course, highly attractive. So anyway, finally, we've got some recommendations as well. So with that, I'd like to pass it over to our students, master's degree students at Royal Roads University, in the Daytime Accelerated Program, which means that they have to, if you don't mind, you know, they would have to leave after this thing, they have assignments due in the morning. So thank you very much. Scott Hoadley, please take it away.
Thank you very much. As Brian mentioned, my name is Scott Hoadley, I'm a master's student at Royal Roads University. And if you really want to have some fun, bring a lawn chair out to where I live. And if you really want to have some fun, bring a lawn chair out to where I live and sit at the McTavish interchange. And watch the roundabout, watch a roundabout work in its finest. Going all directions, stopping and backing up, but anyway.
Excuse me for interrupting, but I wonder if you could pull the microphone towards you?
Certainly. When we started this project, there are some questions that we needed to ask. And these are the topics that we've researched, and these are the topics that we've investigated, and that are part of the project. It is by no means a complete list, and it set the stage for what we're going to be presenting here this evening. We ask that you look and keep in mind these questions as my cohort presents their information and see if we missed anything. What did we miss? What did we get? And let us know after, if there's anything that we should add. And I look forward to my team's presentation.
Thank you, Scott. My name's Nancy, I come from China, I'm a customer of Scott. Okay. I'm sorry. Sorry. Okay, thank you. So let us have a look at Suk, what do we, what kind of natural resources do we possess from which we might utilize to help create a strong sense of place? And the south part of Suk region is along the coastline, from where we have easy access to gathering the resources from the sea, such as the seaweed and the other seafoods. And up to the north, we have huge bunch of woods. Productions from the forest, like the wood mushrooms and other extracts from different plants is our, another active advantage. And also, we have lots of farms nearby the Suk community, which produce not only fruits, vegetables, crops, and also the flowers and other ingredients for the food and the human health. Since we have so many varieties of natural resources around the whole Suk area, there are huge potential possibilities to utilize some of those to develop the local retail stores or supply chain within the industry, like the local handicraft workshops. So, we have now in Suk several retail stores, but mostly the goods they are selling are not local-produced. What we might want to do is to make these natural resources as a brand for Suk or make a sense of that Suk is a living, dynamic, and fun place with the concept of local grow, local produce, and local sell. And plus the existing cultural activities such as fine arts show and local musicians. And farmers' markets, farming festivals, we just need to, need more efforts to combine the natural resources, cultural activities, and other outdoor adventures all together strongly and organically. Let's move to my last. Colton, thank you.
Good job. So hi, I'm Colton. You're gonna have to help me out with this. So essentially, I looked at sort of the marketing and if there was a demand for new tourism activities, and it showed that there was, especially among return visitors. So this was information from a Tourism Victoria Exit Survey, and sixty percent of people were interested in new experiences that Victoria had to offer. So we're looking at a return market. The most popular activities, the top five Suk would all be able to offer, but in a different setting, therefore, a different product. And then throughout the list, the left-hand side is sort of experiences people wanted to do, and then the right-hand side of the graph is experience that they actually did. So there is some major discrepancies in it, and it's a mixture of the amount of time people spent in Suk, as well as the lack of products offered, sorry, not in Suk, amount of time spent in Victoria, Vancouver, and that area. But the right-hand side, I sort of discovered that it was between a lack of time spent in the area and then the lack of product that influenced whether or not they would actually participate in the activities. So the main visitors that we would be looking to, like I mentioned, are return visitors, the fully independent travelers, so not the ones coming on the cruise ships or in large groups right away. Locals who want a different experiences, and then, again, those travelers who stay longer. In terms of marketing, I looked at Squamish as a case study, and what they did is they used major anchor tenants, like their big chief mountain. And they let the locals tell the stories to sort of direct the marketing plan. So going around, they were asking people what they thought of Squamish. And one of the quotes they got for someone was that it wasn't a manufactured destination. So the locals sort of directed the whole marketing plan that they came up with for tourism. And it was seen in like my Squamish adventure where locals and tourists that came to the area would tell their experience there, what are the major highlights? And that sort of directed the whole marketing plan for them. Thank you.
Okay, hi, I'm Kathy, and I am also a student at Railroads. And so I'm talking about another example, and it's Tofino. This is one of the destinations that we went to on our field trip. And Tofino is another example of what they did right. So like Squamish, they have the feeling of, bring it out to the locals, get the locals' opinion, have the local experience. They use the hashtag in Tofino of "your Tofino", and that brings about that sense of engagement and the local feelings and the stories. So Tourism Tofino was somebody that we spoke to, and they talked highly about their brand. And brand is something that we're talking a lot about tonight. And with their brand, it was only with positive cues. So they stayed away from the negative. That beautiful mark that you see up there for Tofino is only used positively. They don't put it on rubbish trucks, rubbish bins, it's not put on any parking tickets, it's not associated with the police in any, in anything, it is all positive. And that has helped increase their brand, and it was, had made their brand become worldwide and world-known. So Tofino, and the Tourism Tofino is a destination management office, not just a destination marketing office. And that's something that we are recommending for Suk, and that we'll talk about a little bit later. But Tofino is a resort municipality tax, which is not available for Suk, but is definitely something that we can think about as the management office to help promote tourism. One of the other things that Tofino did that was similar to Squamish, and which is what we're doing here this evening, is working with the local population to get their opinion. The local residents are very important in their opinions, and Tofino recognized that, and that's what we're doing here this evening. So you get the, you get the understanding of the wants, the needs from the people and the residents, take it back to council and make the final decision. The big, the big last concern for Tofino, which was just overcome, was parking. And we understand with the development of the downtown, the new destination, will be one of those things, is parking, and how to create that density and that walking and that moving traffic. And as you can see, this picture here shows how they solve this problem. They did it through cityscaping and having cars park on the streets that people are walking on sidewalks and not just into parking lots. Thank you, I'll be back.
Okay, hello everyone, my name's Jing, I'm from China, my province is called Inner Mongolia Province, so, which is the northern part of China, I'm also a student at the Royal Roads. And today I'm going to talk about how to get Chinese tourists for Suk. So first, I would allow to give some background information about Chinese tourists. So every, every year during the Chinese New Year, which is end of the January to at the beginning of February, and also another vacation is called Chinese National Day. So it's on October, a lot of Chinese tourists, they come to Vancouver and they come to Victoria. So they just, they just stay in Vancouver for a couple days, and afterwards, they take a trip to Banff, and then they come back, and then they, they will come to Victoria for one day, spend one day in Butch's Garden, and just go around downtown and go back to Vancouver and go back to China. But until one day, when my parents, they, they come to Victoria, so I get a chance, took them to Suk, and I took them to mom's coffee, and my mom, she bought a lot of handicrafts from the museum. So like, I just realized Suk has already have a lot of resource, which is for a lot of Chinese tourists, they are really looking for it. Because majority of Chinese tourists, they all from big cities, so it's kind of very fast speed and full of the stress. So they don't have too much time spent in some like authentic and countryside, and just enjoy the slow-speed life. When they come to Suk, it's just gives them a fresh idea about what is the lifestyle supposed to be in Canada. So, and also I did some research, majority of Chinese tourists, when they travel to the different countries, three activities they really want to do, fishing, golfing, and shopping. So Suk has a lot of fishing industry and also local farms. They can pick up the fresh vegetable and fruits from farms and try a lot of authentic food in some small local restaurant. And also for shopping, like majority of Chinese people, they love to buy some gift and then bring back to China to, to their friends. And Suk have a lot of wonderful handicrafts. So they can just buy it, and very unique, they couldn't find it in other countries, so they can bring other gift. So next, I will pass to my partner, Yixi.
Okay, my name is Yixi, I come from Beijing, China. So during the summer break, we, our target market is students, which we can divide it into two groups. One is high school or college students from China. Right now, there are many schools already organize some field trip to Vancouver or Victoria. So we can attract them, bring them to Suk by offering agriculture, agriculture learning or language learning, because in China, we don't have many chance to close to nature and have farming experience. So this one can be really differentiated. And another group is for those students who has already studied in North America. During the summer break, they are willing to travel with their friends or bring their parents to here and travel around. So for them, their behavior is more like fully independent traveler. So we can offer them the activities at the left side. And this, we think is only, also a good chance to attract Chinese investors, because after they have taste of Suk experience or know more about Suk from their children's description, they will find business opportunities here. Thank you.
So we talked, we talked a little bit earlier about brand, and the question at this point becomes, what is the current Suk brand? How do I, how do we identify ourselves in the global tourism world? And how can we develop the new brand for Suk? So these are the sorts of questions that we want to ask and look at as we move forward. This is a critical step in identifying the future of tourism, particularly in Suk. Who are you? What are you? What are you offering? We all know that Vegas, for example, says, "What happens in Vegas stays in Vegas." You guys can work with that however you like. But we need to identify Suk. And what do we have here that makes it so unique that it's going to draw tourists to the community? The second component of that, and this is purely from a marketing perspective, is, what do you put on a t-shirt that's going to sell a t-shirt? Those are the sorts of questions that we're asking, and those are the sorts of things that we need to find out as we roll this project forward.
Okay, I'm back. Okay, so city slow is a concept that comes from Italy, from a small town in Italy. And basically what it is, is that it's a, it's a great way to live. It's a concept about slowing down life. And there is an actual example of this on our island, and it's in Cowichin Bay. Cowichin Bay is a city slow community. And basically what city slow is, is that it's a different way of development. It's based on improving the quality of life. It's characterized by authenticity, by the products and of good food, of rich and fascinating crafts, valuable works of arts, restaurants, festivals, places of spirit and unspoiled landscapes and spontaneity. It basically, it brings the town together, and it has champions. And that's what Suk we feel needs. It's a small, thriving community that it can be bolstered up and have a quality of life that has very, is slow and relaxed, and will bring people out here. Some of the design aspects that we thought about, we listened to the council members when we came out, and we, we've taken this back, and we feel that the design is definitely an open-air, beautiful view of the water down outside with festivals and food markets and farmers' markets, the fishmonger celebrate the ocean that we live on out here, give a reason for people to shop in Suk. This third step here of mixing and memorabilia is very important, and this is something that Jing spoke to about shopping. And it's not just going out and getting the snow globes or the t-shirts or what you get downtown in Victoria. We want people to come out here and be able to go home with something that an artisan from Suk has made. We want to celebrate the local residents and the local artists out here, and we want people to be able to take it home and remember, and remember their time that they had in Suk. Obviously, the brew pub is very important, and we'll get to that very shortly. But we want to capitalize as well on the different things that Suk already has, the mountain biking, the surfing, the trail running, the festivals. Increase the amount of festivals that are out here, make reasons for people to come to Suk. Okay, so finally, on my part, is some waterfront ideas. So for the design, the top right-hand picture is actually something that exists here in Suk already. It's down at Mariner's Village, and it's this, an old post with rope wrapped around it. And while it is, it's old and it's rustic-looking, that's the feeling and the design element that we foresee for this downtown development. Use the history that is in Suk already. Suk has a longstanding, beautiful history, a heritage of its industry. Work with it, use it, love it, bring it forward in today's day. Have water access for kayaks and smaller boats. We have a beautiful basin that's here, people live in and around it, have fun with it. The little miniature boats, the aqua-style bus joining East Suk to Suk. Both Victoria and Vancouver have this as examples. I'm going with Vancouver because it's geared to the local residents, where Victoria is geared to tourists. Having this being brought in can join East Suk to Suk and take away from the density of the traffic that runs through the highway here. It'll increase foot traffic, and it will bring people into Suk for Saturdays and shopping days and the farmers' markets and the fishmongers and everything that we're bringing forward. The other thing that we figure would be a really great idea for Suk, for this development, is the density aspect of it. Having a lively core, which would be involved with condos and lofts built into the downtown area. We want people to have a sense of life down there, and condos and people living in that area will utilize that. And now for Keith.
Hello, my name is Keith, and while I was doing another assignment, and I researched a lot about the renewable energy, and suddenly I come out, this idea may work for Suk as well. As we all know, there are four main parts of renewable energy, wind, solar, and tidal and biomass. And I guess the tidal and biomass may work for Suk. And the reason why there is, one of the strongest currents is lying on the west coast of Canada. So if we put like the tidal turnbys on the west coast of Suk, it will generate electricity which will like feed for the half-city, half of the Suk. So it will be cost efficiency better than you use a fossil fuel which will like destroy the environment, I think. And the biomass as well, because you already got like a huge number of farms which you can use, there like crops and others to use as the resources for the biomass sources. So generate- So generates electricity as well and also protect the environment. I list several of the benefits here, like the job opportunities, which also based on the research, the renewable energy will generate more jobs opportunities than the fossil fuel and so the original one. And the revenue increase, obviously, if we draw on business in the town, it will increase the tax-based revenue as well. And draw other business, which I want to explain a little bit more, once there are lots of like renewable companies or like the lab located here, so the population will increase. Once, they will have a need to where I can eat or where I can live. So the restaurants and the hotels have to like set some locations here, which will also draw other people come to the city. Because if there is a great restaurant, so I live in Landfort, I just heard of there is a great restaurant, I may just have a day trip there and visit the restaurant. And, and on the other hand, I saw some handicrafts and maybe I just grab some and take it home. That’s reasonable, right? And educational tourism. And for, I think for lots of people, the renewable energy is kind of new thing. So those companies or those laboratories can cooperate with the high schools as well as elementary school. So lead those children to their companies or to their labs to see how the renewable energy generates the electricity. So give them an insight of protect our environment, protect our motherland. So that’s all my ideas and hand it to my partner. Thanks.
Hello, everyone. My name is Victory Ben Jackson and I’m from Nigeria. About the brew pub, the idea that we have for the brew pub is to create one that is unique, that will work in line with what my colleague said about creating a sense of place and attracting more visitors to Suk. And we think that for the success of the brew pub, we recommend partnership with government associations and non-government associations that will help to promote and market the Suk brand. And we recommend that the brand should be locally made, like locally produced beers. And here, apart from the fact that having a brew pub will help people have a sense of place for hikers, for other visitors, giving them a place to rest or a place to hang out after their visit, we also think that having a brew pub in Suk will have economic advantages as well and will also provide jobs to the youth and to other people in Suk. So we think this is a good investment that Suk should work on. And my colleague will talk about more recommendations on how this will be successful. Thank you.
Hi, I’m Janice, I’m from China. I study in Royal University as well, they’re classmates. So now I’m going to talk about some recommendation for the brew pub. Firstly, we want Suk brew pub, not Taffina brew pub, not the Cowichan brew pub. So we have to brand well, like we have to hold our local brand very carefully because we want to differentiate with other brew pubs in B.C. And another one is, we have to conduct market research frequently. There is two stage that it’s important for the market research. Firstly, we need to conduct the market research before the brew pub officially launch. Because it’s essential to gather the ideas and the opinion from the potential customers, like what they want in the brew pub, what they want to look like, like the brew pub look like. So it’s very important for the, for the marketing. And another recommendation, sorry, another stage, it’s conduct the survey, it’s an ongoing process, like conduct the surveys during the brew pubs going on to get more feedback from the existing customers. The next recommendation, it’s for the management group. The management group should put more information, sorry, put more effort in professional knowledge training among the staff. Because our product line will include the craft beer tour, which require professional knowledge about craft beer. And the last one, it’s the brew pub have to keep the high quality of their product and the service. Because the quality is related to the mouth, the word of mouth. It’s a very important advertisement method. So the good quality of product can increase the reputation of the brew pub. So it will help in the further development and also for the marketing as well. So here is several picture that we picked from the successful example brew pub. In our, in our marketing planning, we decided to design the brew pub as a large open space, waterfront, and lab design. Have you ever been to a brew pub like, like a science lab? I think it’s interesting. I don’t know if you like this idea or not, I hope you like it. So, and also, after the outdoor spots like kayaking, fishing, what do you want? You want a cup of beer? So just come through downtown Suk, right? So this is our idea, thank you.
My name is Sultan, I’m from Kazakhstan. So in order to understand the potential power which Suk have and to build a sense of place, in order to attract more tourists, here’s some of the recommendations we have come up. For local, local culture, we want to improve the annual arts show. And, and use this opportunity to promote other activities such as handicraft workshops and other like sports activities. And in terms of natural resources, like my partner Nancy have said, Suk possess really great amount of natural resources. And what Suk have to do, have to create a strong marketing, marketing of these resources as it’s your local providers and as well as your supplier, suppliers. Also, it’s better to develop a healthy, sustainable business chain that can lead to other generation, generations to, to your kids and your grandkids. And also, to create, like I said, more festivals which can relate to the arts, arts events. Thank you.
That’s pretty fast, you know? Okay, well, this is the tip of the iceberg for a lot of material, okay? There’s lots of other stuff underneath this. Each of the presenters here have done a great deal of work in coming up with much more detailed explanations. This is not a consulting report. You already have lots of those, right? Like this deep. This is a different situation, it’s a framework, it’s just a set of ideas, concepts and ideas that have come forward. Just to summarize, name the downtown, give it a, give it a name. Start with the families, start with markets, playgrounds. Take a look at the Whistler playgrounds and see how incredibly successful those are. Investment strategy, I think that might have been thought of, has that been thought of? Ah, you have a new, ah, yes, well, hi, good, take it away. Yeah, now you know. Densify the downtown. Build places for residents first, that, that is really a strong, strong element we’ve heard. Medical, dental center, X-ray machines, okay? I mean, there’s the number one thing you really need, right? Given my age, I’m going to really need it shortly as well, too. Given government structure, this is actually really important. And this is the one that sends shivers down our, my collective spine, having been involved with East Suk politics for a long time. I would just suggest that that one is going to be really important and it’s something you really pay attention to. And developing an economic development strategy that’s already happening on a regional basis, alternative transportation, perimeter parking, make sure that it’s a walkable space downtown. Link the downtown cycling to the galloping goose, for goodness please, okay? So I can get here. Otherwise, I’m going to have to buy an electric bike, you know, to get up the hills. Develop educational tourism opportunities, that’s already happening here, you make a fantastic educational tourism destination. It’s already happening in Taffina, we just finished a big study on that just recently. Promote retirement living in, you know, that, that’s already happening, but it’s something that could be promoted more. And finally, build a coalition of the willing. That’s a really important thing. And I think Suk, I really believe strongly, strongly, okay? Suk is ready for that kind of a coalition to actually get things going. And first and foremost, about people that live here, that’s the number one thing. Festivals, 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 events, events, events. Shall I use the, okay, arts festival. I’m sorry, I just had to do it, okay? You know what I mean, why not? If you’re in a perfect location for this, you really are, it’s absolutely ideal. You’ve got all the same distances, circumstances that you’re going to need to make this place a really exciting place to live. It already is, I love living here and I think that it’s a great opportunity. There’s a salmon festival, is a particular opportunity, there’s a great opportunity there. A number of different kinds of festival events, you’ve got the talent in the community to make this work, there’s no question about it. You’ve also got some substantial changes demographically in Suk which are going on and are going to continue with younger families moving here. All those things are happening, this is the time for doing this kind of thing. So, Yoana and members of the council, thank you so much for hosting us this way, we really appreciate it. Wow. I’ve got two words, brew pub. No, thank you, Brian White and your students, excellent presentation and, you know, I’ve had the pleasure of sitting up here for, I think, my fourth year now and I think that was probably one of the most exciting presentations that I’ve had, had the pleasure of watching. So really, really cool ideas. Thank you to your students, thank every one of you for attending our, our session tonight, it was, it was excellent. I think your timing was really good, too. Some, some, some things worked.
10 minutes of presentation.
Yes, exactly, right. So I will turn it over to other councillors. Very exciting things, very, very enthusiastic and I really like that. So councillor Berger.
Yes, thank you, I don’t really have any questions, I just want to say thank you so much for coming, that was such a fantastic, fantastic information and really, really well presented. I’ve got two pages of wonderful notes and I, this is my third term on council and this is by far one of the better presentations and, or sessions that I had, that I’ve been part of. So thank you so much for all of your time, work and energy put into this.
I was just wondering if we could have a copy of the presentation for us all, please?
Oh yeah. We have the copy of this presentation, but also all the presentations that are underneath it, and they all have notes, okay? It’s all done in APA format. So we got all that and there’ll also be a summarizing document that comes out of this, which we’ll write at the end.
I think, I think that you all did an amazing job and it really says Suk to me for what you have talked about this evening. And I think that everything that you talked about really is a positive for us here. Thank you.
Councillor Loggins, thank you.
Thank you. I think, well, thank you so much, all of you, for coming and presenting. You all have so much passion for our town and that makes me really excited for it, too. The vision that you created was beautiful and exactly what I’ve heard reflecting, reflected in our community in recent years. I believe that Suk should be funding community groups that leverage funds to work towards this vision and, because the return on that investment will obviously lead us to that I like that you touched on the quality of life aspect as well, because I believe that that is what will improve the tourism in this area and it will attract not only visitors but also future residents. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Caspian?
Yeah, Brian, I just want to thank you and the students that I had the opportunity to meet with. I have to apologize that I took so long during our session and I really enjoyed myself. You know, I, I think we had a good time and I, I just want to acknowledge the hard work and, and the questions that these students asked of us politicians who had the opportunity to meet with them. And, you know, it was really enlightening because to me it showed, okay, here’s, here’s some visitors and people from outside of our world. And their eyes were just wide open with enthusiasm about what we have to offer. And, and I think that rubbed off on all of us. And I’m not, I can’t speak for all council members, but I’m sure they shared the same feeling that your enthusiasm as students and visitors to our part of the world, I think encourages us and our community to do the things that you’ve talked about. So I just want to thank you and your students for what you’ve done for us. Thank you.
So now I’ll ask any members of the public that would like to speak to this, to the tourism issue that we just heard.
On the tourism issue, I’d be happy to speak to that. My name’s Gerald McQuire, I’m the new president of the Suk Fine Arts. And I have to also say, I really did enjoy the presentation, it was exciting. And obviously, I’d be a wee bit biased when you talk about the Suk Fine Arts. And I think it was Graham, is it Graham, your name?
Scott.
Scott, oh, I’m from Glasgow, I should have got that one. Anyhow, what can we say? Anyway, Scott, you talked about what happens in Vegas stays in Vegas. Well, I want to say, we came to council for $7,000 and the Suk Fine Arts, as it’s facing its 30th anniversary this year, almost half a million dollars stays in our community. And we think that that’s the type of work that brings about the vision that you presented here by you and your students and I applaud you for it.
Next, so why not?
And tourism.
And tourism.
My name is Sally Manning and I am a board member of the Suk Fine Arts Society. Laugh if you may, if you must, but I want to commend the international students for recognizing the importance of arts and festivals in the community of Suk. It’s what we are built on, as well as the fishing community and the, and the logging community that was our history. So I commend you for recognizing that and thank you very much for such wonderful, wonderful, well-researched projects that you have done. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Gail Armitage, I’m just here as a personal, just a citizen right now. Thank you so much, it was, it was a fabulous presentation and I enjoyed all of it. From arts, yes, I agree, arts is important and we have an amazing number of local artisans and craftsmen here in the, in this area and they, they should be encouraged. But I was particularly fascinated by the integration of sustainable energy. So thank you so much for bringing that into the equation. That is an opportunity for a lot of jobs and, and helping us save our environment over the long term. So I thought the whole thing was integrated really, really well and I really enjoyed it, so that’s all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Carol Wilford, I’m the new president of the Suk Community Arts Council. And I would like to thank you very much for your presentation. We could not have timed this better. Everything you said was how we feel about tourism and the arts and the culture and what it does for our community and the people it brings in, the education, the culture, everything is just incredible. So I enjoyed it thoroughly. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name’s Ron Ramsey, I live in beautiful Shirley, Wanda Fuka. And I would just like to bring up one more important aspect of the tourism in Suk. And that is, it’s access to beautiful pristine old growth forests in the central wall of Brand Valley, Carmana Park. And these, these, these tracts of old growth forests are the real, I feel it’s the real elephant in the room that we must address other than Kinder Morgan. The, the old growth forests are, I think, subconsciously with most tourists are why they come here. And we should do our best to promote some And we should do our best to promote some kind of access into the Carmana from this end, and Suk could be the gateway, gateway to that beautiful park. And we've got lots of potential up there for lots of trails. And there's just a few, the Central Wall brand is, we would like to make it part of the park up there, because it is the access point for that park. And we encourage Suk to get on board with pushing that as a tourist attraction up there, you know? Thank you. Thank you.
My name's John Russell. I'm just here and have moved to Suk recently. I've known Suk for a long time. I was here back in the 70s when it was all about the Suk logging days, and those were wonderful things. I have spent most of my life involved with the arts, and I can only say this is one of the most amazing communities and always has been. I was a juror on the Suk Fine Arts Show for many years running and have since moved here. I'd like to say that Suk is in a very unique position. The size of Suk, the appropriate distance that it has from other major centers, within reason. And I think it can develop into a very unique situation. It has one of the most amazing, I've only, I've known of this in the past, but one of the most amazing collection of artisans and artists that I've ever known, a lot of them exhibiting elsewhere, because facilities here for that are not available. And I think that's a tremendous resource, a resource that unfortunately has to scatter itself to places like Sydney. And I think this center, this area deserves to recognize them in a greater capacity. And I think something that I've known of and everybody's known on the Greater, on Vancouver Island, of course, is the Suk Fine Arts Show. And it is one of those things where you can go beyond the island, and people will know of it. You can bring up that name, and instantly, anybody in the arts in this, in all of B.C. will pretty well understand that this is, happens here annually. It's one of the most important things for identity that this community has cultivated over the many years it's been here. So, I just want to say how much I support anything going forward in that direction for this community. Thank you.
So, is there any other members of the public that would like, oh, go ahead, Mr. White?
Just a couple of things. I did my PhD dissertation on Clarkwood Sound, okay? So, there's that. Sorry, oh, use the mic, yes, right. I should know that. I did my PhD dissertation on Clarkwood Sound and Tofino, and so I have some strong sympathy for old growth forest preservation. The other piece I'd just like to mention, and also, thank you so much for all your kind comments. We appreciate it, and I really appreciate the hard work everybody did here and the level of nervousness which they got over once they got up here, okay? So, thank you for that. I appreciate it very much. The other point is that there's steps going forward, and Bonnie, I think you said that there was some comment cards, which we might want to have, which are at the back, which I'd really appreciate it if you could actually help those out. And once again, this is not a consulting project. No taxpayers' money were used in the presentation. So, you know, and once again, I'd like to say thank you very much indeed, and appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Somebody set it up to the, somebody set it to the mic?
I'll just add a last comment. My name is Ray Freeman. I'm an associate faculty at Royal Roads. I've been peripherally helping a little bit, but not much. They've done most of the work themselves. I'm a graduate from the master's program, so that's something they're aspiring to. I'm also a tourism industry consultant, have been since 2008. And I work with many communities, mostly over Western Canada, many passionate communities. So, one thing I want to implore you as a community to do is to channel your individual passions for each of the types of activities that you believe in, and see how you can work together. One important thing is, people think about what, impressions of what tourism is. Tourism is very interdisciplinary, and there are many businesses here who don't necessarily think they're in tourism, but the, you know, the gas stations, the grocery stores, those other types of services that cater to the locals also cater to visitors and guests in your community. So, it's really critical that you gather everybody together, and, you know, it's a wonderful community, but in order to accomplish everything, you have to work together. So, thank you.
Thank you, Nikki Loggins. I'm a resident of Otter Point. Thank you so much. That was really inspiring. I do think that there is a lot of potential in this community. There's a lot of people doing amazing work in the arts, in culture, in, well, in the restaurants, on the sea, and in the woods, and so on. I think what we're not good at, though, is tooting our own horn. And I challenge our mayor and council to take on that role for our, for our community and really consider your role in tooting the horn of Suk. I would like to suggest that maybe what happens stays in Vegas stays in Vegas, but maybe it's time for what happens in Suk to get out to the world.
Hi, my name's Gabriel, and I'm not part of any group or anything. I thank Royal Roads University for their input. I just wanted to know, did Suk not have a vision before? Did we not have studies before as what to do to develop the town core? Did we need, okay, and what has happened? I do like the last point there, build a coalition of the willing. I think that's very important, because you can have all the studies in the world, but if you don't do anything, nothing will happen. And I also like the practical nature of it. Build a medical center, X-ray as well. As much as the arts are great in Suk, it is a bedroom community. A lot of people that pay taxes, that live here, work in Victoria. So, when you say develop another alternative transportation, perimeter parking, that's an aspect, too. So, there's a pragmatic way of doing things as well. And as much as the development of Suk should happen, it should happen on a very practical level, too. I mean, sidewalks, for crying out loud. You'll have a whole lot of sidewalk artists, too, if you actually build sidewalks that we actually can walk on. So, you can integrate everything. But my whole thing is, if you have studies and everything else like that is great, and we had it as well, but if you don't actually put the shovel to the ground, it's all ethereal. It's of no use. So, I urge council to take a pragmatic approach to developing the nitty gritties of what Suk needs as well as the peripheral, the arts and the hiking and everything else like that. But put the shovel to the ground, have the vision, have the gumption to actually go through with it. So, that's my two cents. Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, Brian Zoot, 6512 Stonewood Drive. One thing I haven't noticed really in the presentation is accessibility to Suk as well. And we've all heard one way in, one way out. It would be nice if we could have accessibility, maybe through Phillips Road or something, to more access up island from other areas, so people can come here more as a destination. Thank you.
Thank you. Wow.
Hello, I have lived here for 10 years. I come from a small town. Oh, my name's Audrey.
Okay. Hi, Audrey.
My working life was in Toronto in Ontario, and when I retired, I went back to a very small town, probably the size of Suk. Every year, I would attend the Toronto Film Festival. I love film, and it was wonderful. I would like to see some sort of theater here for people to, what they did in Midland, gave it away, the films came out from Toronto once a year, and every other week, they would show one of the films from the film festival. It was extremely well-attended for this tiny town. Is that something that we could do here? I mean, I...
I think so.
Because I think it would be very, I go to Sydney to see the films. It's a long way away, and certainly sometimes in Victoria, but it'd be wonderful to have it here, because I'd be there, all of them, and I'm sure everybody else. And we need a Chinese restaurant.
Here, is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak to the tourism group from Royal Roads? Hearing none. I want to thank you again from the council, from the mayor and the council, for attending tonight, and for the work that you're doing, and for the opportunity for us to put that input into our community and, you know, the embryo of good things to come. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the, it's in the new business, is it the Presentation on Primary Healthcare Services Working Group?
Simon.
Review of Suk Diagnostic Imaging and Analysis Recommendation, Linda Nera? Did I say that right?
I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, no problem.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
That was a hard act to follow, and this is not going to be as much fun, that's for sure. My name is Linda Nera. I'm a member of the Suk Region Community Health Initiative, and I sit on the Primary Healthcare Services Working Group, which is chaired by the mayor. The working group was formed about two years ago, and essentially took over the role of the mayor's advisory council on health and social initiatives. And it is a cross-sectional group. We have representation from Island Health, from Chi, from the Suk Family Resource Society, from the South Island Division of Family Practice, local physician is on it as well, and the Suk Region Volunteer Center is represented. And our main priority has been to look at the health concerns, the health service concerns of the community of Suk, and to try and move those issues forward in some way. We also, by the way, have Air Manor recently joined us in terms of representation, so I wouldn't want to forget about them. Certainly, one of the issues that I know the community has struggled with and that we have struggled with is the diagnostic services or the X-ray services, the inadequacy of the service, both in terms of availability and in terms of the quality and the facility itself. So, we were very fortunate this year to have the South Island Division of Family Practice, who is a member of our group, hire a consultant to do an analysis of the X-ray service. The consultant worked with the family physicians and came up with a excellent review, looking at all aspects of the X-ray service. So, I'm pleased to have Erica Kjekstad here today, tonight, thank you, and Nikki's sitting beside her. And she's going to walk us through an issue that, as we got into it more and more, we realized is an extremely complex issue. And I know that Erica has presented this information to us and will hopefully make sense of why this has been so difficult for everybody in the community for so long.
Thank you, Linda, and thank you, council, for having me here this evening. My name is Erica Kjekstad. I'm with the South Island Division of Family Practice. About a year ago, I was asked to take a look at the X-ray facility in Suk and diagnostic imaging in general in the Suk area. The facility that is here at Suk Road and Otter Point Road is not serving the community well. I have done as objective a review of the situation as I can, and I'd like to present the findings of that review to you this evening. Oh, I can do this, sorry. That guy isn't here anymore. As Linda had introduced, the Primary Healthcare Services Working Group is comprised of many different organizations. The physician from West Coast Family Medical Clinic, as well as representatives from the South Island Division of Family Practice and Island Health, who combined work on a group called the Partners for Better Health. That was the group who had initiated this conversation on behalf of the Primary Healthcare Services Working Group, as well the Community Health Initiative, other community organizations such as Suk Region Resources, Suk Family Resource Society, and Air Manor, as well as Mayor Tate from the Suk Council. Thinking about the Suk X-ray facility, what is the current X-ray demand? What could future demand look like, and what could some next steps be? You've all been, hopefully not in, but near the facility in Suk. Just to give you a little bit of background, this is an analog machine. This is what was popular 25 years ago. Technology has proceeded from that point. It produces films, the same sort of films that you might see at the dentist's office, the black and white things. These cannot be sent digitally to a radiologist for reading. They need to be physically transported from the X-ray facility where they're processed to the radiologist to read the scan. The X-ray facility in Suk is owned by West Coast Medical Imaging. This is a privately-owned company. I have no affiliation whatsoever with this company. They own all of the non-hospital X-ray facilities in the Greater Victoria area, as well as several in the Lower Mainland. So, they are certainly an entity in the diagnostic imaging world here. Yes? Oh, because I'm not doing it. Thank you. Thank you. In terms of the demand for X-ray in Suk, this is where I wanted to start the analysis, to see what sort of services are being needed right now in the community. In taking a look at the EMR system, the electronic medical records, the computer that the doctor types into when you go to the West Coast Family Medical Clinic, there are 2,000, sorry, 27,631 patients on record at the clinic. I did not go through all those records. I worked with Dr. Tom Valley at the clinic, and he was able to tell me that 1,837 patients received X-ray, at least one X-ray, between January 2014 and January 2015. This is where I started my analysis. In terms of breaking that down a little bit, taking a statistically significant sample, I know everybody's eyes are going to roll in the back of their heads when I start talking statistics. If we take a look at that, 333, looking at 333 patient records would give us a reasonable picture of the greater population of 1,837 patients. Doing some analysis on that statistically significant sample will allow us to extrapolate to the larger population, and then take a look at what that could mean for the residents of the Suk region in its totality, 17,900. Does that make sense to everybody so far? Now, for ease and convenience of math, we're not going to talk about 1,837. We're going to talk about 2,000. Let's round up and just multiply by six rather than have to do more complicated math. So, what did the data tell us? I took a look at 333 records, and of those, there were 633 X-rays contained within those 333 patients. Of those, 39% of those X-rays were ordered by the family doctor, the family doctor just down the road at the West Coast Family Medical Clinic. 21% were from an emergency room doctor, 21% were from a specialist, there were 7% from a walking clinic, 7% from the urgent care clinic, also operated out of the same location in Suk, and 4% were in hospital, hospitalist-ordered X-rays. That was what the number of 633 broke down to. When I looked at these 633 X-rays, I looked at where, as you can see here, who ordered the X-ray, where the X-ray was taken in terms of location geographically, in terms of, sorry, what anatomy was examined? That has an effect on the billing and with the profitability of each X-ray. There was some very interesting information that came out of this. I took a look at the information for different age categories. So, in the age category for 0 to 16 years, there were 1.6 on average scans per person. For those between the age of 17 and 64 were 1.7, sorry, 1.8 scans per person. And for those 65-plus, 2.2 scans per person. So, it does show that there is an increase in the number of X-rays as age increases. That's important for a population with a significant seniors' representation. I was thinking about the predicted behaviors of patients. If we had the best possible facility here in Suk, how could it be used? If you went to your GP in Suk and he or she said, "I'd like you to get an X-ray," you would absolutely access the closest, your most likely facility would be the Suk X-ray facility. If you were one of the commuters who maybe worked in downtown Victoria, and you went to visit a walking clinic in downtown, it's more likely... visit a walking clinic in downtown, it's more likely that you would visit the closest open X-ray facility. You wouldn't necessarily wait until you returned home to a potentially closed facility. In hospital, both ER and hospitalist-ordered X-rays would be taken in hospital. You're not going to wander down the street in your hospital gown to come to the Sook X-ray facility. As well, for specialists, many of them operate specifically within the hospital, others operate out of their practices. It depends on where you see the doc, or where you see the hospitals, pardon me, where you see the specialist. So the closest open X-ray facility would probably be your first choice, or a recommended In terms of looking at the numbers, when I was analyzing them, I took half of the possible specialist visits that were scanned outside of hospital, if that makes sense. So if you're going to go see your specialist in downtown Victoria, you wouldn't necessarily go to the hospital for that X-ray. In terms of the scans ordered by Sook GPs, so this is of the 633, the 39% plus the 7% that were ordered by Sook GPs, this is where those scans were taken. Of the 299 Sook possible scans, I'm calling them, 16 were taken at the local Sook facility. 201 were taken at St. Anthony's Clinic on Goldstream Avenue. Other West Coast Medical Imaging clinics, Yates Street, Fort Street, Burnside, were six. And I'd like to mention that the Sook, St. Anthony's, and other West Coast Medical Imaging, those are all owned by West Coast Medical Imaging. 55 scans were taken at VGH or RJH, and then I mentioned the 50% of specialist scans outside of a hospital. That gives us a total of 299 Sook possible scans, scans that people could attend a local Sook clinic for. I'd like to also point out the 55 scans at the hospitals. These are scans that are not currently being taken by West Coast Medical Imaging, but those are the ones that, those are the revenue, sorry, that's the delta in the revenue that they could be missing. So the 299 Sook possible scans, the 55 net new scans for the Sook clinic, what does this look like in terms of gross income? How much money could be coming out of this? There are 299 Sook possible scans at an average rate of $40 per scan, I'm sorry, that would, multiplying it by six is 1,794 scans for the population of Sook. So in a year, about 1,800 scans. At an average rate of $40 per scan, that would be $71,760 in gross annual income. That's before any expenses associated with an X-ray facility. In terms of the 55 net new scans, where is the incentive to change what's going on at West Coast Medical Imaging? Well, 55 net new scans, multiplied by six is 330 new scans for the population, add a net new gross income of $13,200 for a year. Not a whole lot of money, not a whole lot of incentive for them to change the way they choose to do business. In terms of future, what could it look like, especially with all of the tourists coming now that we've got the plan together there? An estimated growth rate of 2% population growth per year has been considered. And I mentioned before the breakdown, the average number of scans per person. Taking a look at the population estimates from 2014, as well as population predictions for 2030, looking at the number of residents who require an X-ray, the average number of scans per person as mentioned previously, and the percentage of Sook-based scans, I estimate approximately 2,800 scans in Sook in the year 2030. So not quite double what there is right now with the 1,800. I want to take a quick step aside to take a look at capital expenses. We talked about the gross income. What could some of the expenses be associated with a new machine, for example? Mobile X-rays are only permissible in hospital locations, so those aren't on the table. An analog stationary machine, so that's what is in the Sook facility right now, except newer. These are smaller, these are lower-cost machines, and then there's something called a CR, a cassette reader, that can digitize analog images. So it takes that paper, the film scan, and puts them into digital copy. Those can be sent to specialists or radiologists for reading. There's also a digital stationary machine. These are much more expensive. I put these up here just for your information, but we'll use the example of a digital, sorry, an analog stationary machine. We took some information from the Sanwich Peninsula Hospital. It is a community hospital. It services both inpatient and outpatient X-rays. They have approximately 25,000 scans in a year. We know from West Coast Medical Imaging that in a year, there are approximately 3,800 scans that are received back by the patients of Sook. And we also know that with the number of Sook outpatient scans, there's approximately 1,800 scans. Taking a look at the total variable costs associated with X-ray facilities, such as staff compensation, radiologist fees, supplies, and just those expenses that come up, the estimated variable costs, based on the scale of use, would be approximately $47,600 for a year. Keep that number in mind, please. Looking at the net revenue, so let's take a look at the gross number and subtract any of the expenses associated with it. In 2015, we talked about 1,794 scans at an average income of $40 a scan, resulting in a total average income of $72,000. Costs, including staff and fees, software for reading the scan, for reading the, sorry, for putting into the machine so that it can be read, as well as rent and scanning fees, give total costs of $158,696. Maintenance is 7% of the upfront purchase cost of a machine, leading to a net income of minus $98,836 for a new machine. That doesn't look good on anybody's books. Assuming that this machine had a 15-year lifespan, and assuming some increased costs in MSP income per scan, a 2% annual increase in variable costs, as well as a 1% annual increase in rent, I've done the same calculation excluding the software cost, so that in 2030, it's determined that there would be a total annual net income of $31,765. Now, that sounds a little bit better, but don't forget that's 15 years down the road after we have also had a $98,000 loss this year. Taking the net present value of the entire 15-year period and annualizing it, so divided by 15 years, the upgraded Sook X-ray facility would net $7,456 in a year, excluding any of those other random costs that come up. Based on the consumption, based on the use of the facility, even in an idealized situation, it is by no means a money-making venture. It is a money-losing venture. I'd like to give a few considerations to you as well. A new analog X-ray machine with a CR, the cassette reader unit, could provide digitized images, which is great, but it would be low profitability. The purchase of a CR unit for the current machine that is at the West Coast Medical Imaging Facility could produce digitized images at a lower cost. It would just have to buy the CR unit. However, it's likely that the current machine is reaching the end of its viable lifespan. And finally, I took a look at the wonderful maps on your website, and the building where the facility is currently located is within the Sook Town Center Revitalization Plan. So it's possible that the building could be redeveloped, and they might just say, "We're not interested in moving this machine." I'd also like to mention, Lynda had earlier mentioned some of the additional pieces of information. This is a complex topic. The certificate of approval is required for any medical imaging, pardon me, diagnostic imaging device for its use. It is granted by the Ministry of Health and the, I'm just going to get the name here, There is a, the Advisory Committee on Diagnostic Facilities, sorry about that, has created all of the rules surrounding this certificate of approval. I've taken some of the information out of here. The committee may cancel a certificate of approval under these circumstances. When a diagnostic facility has ceased operations, so if they decide to shut down the medical, pardon me, the X-ray facility here in Sook, the certificate of approval would be canceled for that machine. If they have lost their required accreditation, every three years, it's required that a medical imaging device go through a diagnostic approval certificate. The DAP report is due in March, on March 31st of 2016. It's possible that this machine will not receive the next accreditation for this. So therefore, the certificate of approval could be canceled if that is the case. When a diagnostic facility no longer has any affiliated physicians to be able to be associated with that machine, that's not an issue for this because West Coast Medical Imaging has a medical director and imaging director who is responsible. And as well, it can be canceled when a diagnostic facility has experienced a lapse in services for a period of six months or greater. So if the facility is not used for six months, then the certificate of approval can be canceled. I provide this information to you just to give you a bit of a picture of some of the additional complications. If, you might have heard talking about a license, we'll get a license for an X-ray. Licenses don't exist. The certificates of approval are as close as we can get to a license. There is a process within the Ministry of Health for like applications. So let's say there was a new business in Sook who said, "I'm going to put in a medical imaging facility." They would have to apply for a like application. The Ministry of Health takes these into consideration just to make sure that there's not too many suppliers in one area. With a predicted increase of 234 scans over the next 30 years, this is within the current capacity of the facility as it stands right now. So it's unlikely that a certificate of approval would be granted. Wait times are also low. Now, granted, sometimes you have to wait six days to get in because of the operating hours of the facility, but if you needed to get an X-ray, you could go and you would not be waiting for months, like with MRI, for example. Finally, there are three facilities, Sook, VGH, and St. Anthony's, that are within 29 kilometers of each other. One rode in, one rode out. I understand when the Ministry of Health is looking at that, they are looking simply at the distance. They're not looking at the real ramifications of that information. With a population density of 201.6 people per square kilometer, the Advisory Committee on Diagnostic Facilities has a 75-kilometer catchment area around for a diagnostic facility. So with three within 29 kilometers of each other, that is unlikely to happen. I'm sorry to say that my conclusions are thus. It is unlikely that a certificate of approval would be granted for an upgraded diagnostic imaging facility in Sook. It's also unlikely that upgrades are going to be made to the current Sook facility, given the low profitability. The business case is weak for a profitable new facility, and the remaining lifespan of the current unit is unknown. I wish I had better information. I wish I had a brew pub to put up there. There are, however, some next steps that I would like to point you in the direction of. Alternative support solutions could be considered. I know that there's the Contact Support Services Driver Service, where residents of Sook who are without a car and not comfortable taking the bus, because of course they need an X-ray and they are not comfortable. Expansion of those services or advertisement of those services, I think, would be really beneficial to the residents. As well, please keep up to date on the developments. I know I will be. The next DAP report is due in March of 2016. I'd be really interested to see if the facility as it stands right now will continue to operate because of that. There's also always changes in the Ministry of Health policies on diagnostic imaging requirements, standards, technologies, and moratoria. There's a moratorium right now on ultrasound facilities. That expires in 2017, but if there could be a way of maybe twinning some, a new X-ray facility and a new ultrasound facility with an increase in population, with an increase in the number of doctors, with an increase in tourists who are coming to the area, that is something to keep an eye on. It could make for a profitable facility. And as well, development plans for the building that currently stands. It would be interesting to see if that's going to change the picture. I wish I had better news, but I hope that you believe that a thorough investigation has taken place into the feasibility of a new facility, or at least an upgraded one. Thank you.
Wow. That's a lot of information in there and very succinctly presented, so thank you very much for that. I guess I've got a couple of questions. That $40, is that the ministry rate? That's the approved, like, that's the piece I don't understand. You know, if I take my dog down to the veterinarian clinic, it's not $40, I can tell you that.
Don't you wish it was, though?
Yes, I do.
So from the research that I have done, the $40 is an average. So when you go to the X-ray clinic and they scan your, they do a scan of your hand, there is a value associated, a cost associated with that scan. Scan of a chest X-ray is different, scan of a leg is different. The $40 is an average. That's what MSP will pay to, in this case, West Coast Medical Imaging, for taking that X-ray.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes. Well, it just seems like the math is not adding up, that the cost, so the other part is that I found was, is the number of scans, because the 200 and something in your study, in what was it, 18? I can't remember the number.
There were 16 in Sook.
16 in Sook.
For the sample.
Right.
For the 333.
Is that, is that due to the hours that it's open? So...
You know what? It's one of those complicated issues. This facility is open four hours a week.
A week.
A week. A week. That doesn't serve anybody, especially if you break your leg on a Friday and it's only open on the Thursday. I think it's a number of factors. I think it's, it's not a nice place to be. Doctors at the clinic here don't like to send the patients there because the quality of the scan isn't very good. So they'll say, "You know what? If you can, just go to St. Anthony's or go to the hospital." They'll be able to get the scan read faster. Because don't forget, at this facility, it's one of the old negatives when you got your camera, film camera, or camera film developed. It has to physically be taken to the radiologist, who's probably operating out of VGH, who then reads it, who then calls the doctor or types the doctor a report. There's a time lag in terms of getting a diagnosis. That doesn't serve anybody well either. So I think there's a number of reasons why the utilization of the Sook clinic is so low. Hours is absolutely part to do with it, but also the quality of the scan and the quality of the experience.
Okay. Thank you. Any other?
Well, you know, it just doesn't make sense that a local vet has better equipment than what's available here. And so, does that mean that if I want better standard, I could go to my vet and get them to do a scan?
I think you'd probably have to ask your vet.
No, 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 but they could send it digitally to a radiologist to look at it.
I don't know what the cross-breed X-ray rules are.
I, no, but I don't know either. And that's, you know, I think that's what the sad reality is, is that a local vet made a decision to do a significant investment and then to, and then the others in the area actually agree to go and send, you know, the owners of the pets to that particular location, and it's worked well. And, you know, it just doesn't make any sense.
It doesn't make sense, I agree.
And I can understand the economics, yes, but if you, you know, like, it's just not about economics. And maybe that committee that is dealing with the certificate should perhaps come out here and physically see the operation and fully, you know, be made of the facts of the hours, et cetera. I don't know how in the heck, you know, the company was allowed to go through the motions of security, because in my mind, it's tying, it's tying people up. And some people feel, and I'm not accusing them of anything, but some people feel that they're sort of put up and shoveled off the buffalo to go and get something done because it's convenient to the operator and not convenient to the patient or the physicians. And to me, that's the wrong way as far as healthcare services should be in Sook. Like, it just doesn't make bloody sense.
And I can perhaps speak to that. I don't think anybody disagrees with you. I think you're absolutely bang on. We have a provider, a for-profit provider, that basically has a monopoly. And we have a ministry that is, you know, agreeing that it's not quite as broken as it has to be in order to close it. But, yeah, there's nobody, I think every page has been turned over and all the math has been done, but you're right, it's all about, it's not fair. Yeah.
I was just going to say that having to go for X-rays, that they do recommend that you go to the hospital from here, and that wherever you go for your X-rays, if you have to go for a number of them, for a hip operation, they want you to go the same they want you to go to the same place as well. Because, so you can't go to St. Vincent's or St. Anthony's and then to the hospital because they read them differently and get different outcomes by them. So that also determines where people go to for the first one that they have to go for. So it seems quite the distance we have to go, and especially for people who live further out than us.
Absolutely.
You know, yeah. Doesn't sound very good for us.
I don't have too much else to say. I just wanted to say that I'm grateful for the presentation and the information that you've pulled forward, even though it's not the outcome that we're looking for or hoping for. It definitely puts all the questions I have dressed at this time about it. And hopefully, we can take some of these next steps and cross our fingers that the powers that be change their minds. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, no, that's okay. Pretty much the rest of council has said how I feel to you. It's such a doom and gloom awful report because it's not what we wanted or hoped for. What I find, and thank you for all the work you put into it because it does answer lots of questions. It just still leaves us with this awful taste in our mouth that there's not a whole lot we can do about it. So I guess, moving forward, all we can hope for is that regulation changes and our facility doesn't meet those regulations.
Fingers crossed.
Thank you.
Well, I guess, I guess for me, the final comment is that I guess it's time for us as a council to make up our minds whether we're going to, you know, lobby senior levels of government and things like that. I guess that's what's, that's within our power.
And I should respond to that, just to let you know that a fair bit of that lobbying has been done, certainly by the Primary Healthcare Services Working Group. You know, certainly, that doesn't mean that additional voices aren't going to be helpful.
Well, I think it should come from the mayor and council as well, so thank you. Members of the public would like to comment on the X-ray presentation. Hearing none? Okay. Thank you. Thank you for your presentation tonight. So Ms. Sprinkling, just a question. Is the committee of the whole, the new business, is this an introduction of this or is there a presentation?
The, there isn't a presentation. It's just a documentation. You mean the correspondence?
Yes.
From the Suk Lions Club? That is for council, sorry, the committee of the whole to discuss.
Okay. So I know that the Suk Lions approached me and I asked Counselor Parkinson to attend the inaugural meeting of where we would be involved. So could I ask you, Counselor Parkinson, to comment on this and give us an update on this, please? Thank you.
You're welcome. So I met with two members of the Lions Club and they had come forward to talk with the mayor and myself concerning fixing the entrance way to Suk, upgrading it, where the signage is, where we have the line, or the Rotary signage out there. So they're looking at doing, looking after, looking into the maintenance, the lion's signage. They would like to have a better gateway vision for the District of Suk, a more welcoming place to come to. They talked about that where the area is, is owned by the highways. The museum has a huge stake in that land. That it, they use it for their parking, for their market, for storage facilities. So it's in a working group with the Rotary, with the Lions, and with the museum, is what they are planning on doing. And they just want to know, everyone to know that they're representing their own group with consultations and discussion. They will have, they will meet with the First Nations, knowing that it's traditional territory and looking at the native plants and everything that are out there. They would like to see the Goose Connector as well and to showcase the natural beauty of Suk as you're entering into Suk. And they said that they would look at using students from Kamosen, Uofc, Royal Roads, plants maybe from the Federal Horticultural Center. And maybe there would be an opportunity for labor from Williamhead. A lot of times, you can get service from there. And so they just want to know whether council would be online with working towards that and to better showcase the entrance to Suk.
Thank you, Counselor Parkinson. And I think that I'll open up by saying I think that this project is timely, given the downtown improvements, and that's an area I think that we do need to improve because it does say, you know, "Welcome to Suk," and our signs are there. So I think it's, I think it's a real beneficial project. So what are they, what are they asking from council? Is endorsement or is it money or all of the above?
Probably all the above eventually, I would think. It would be all groups working together to support it. They were looking at having a water station as you enter in there, like a bike rack, Wi-Fi, water station, washroom, people place, Wi-Fi, pardon me? Like a kiosk, yeah, is what they were looking for. And they know that they'd have to also work with the Ministry of Transportation. So they wanted an endorsement that we would work alongside them, and they haven't asked for any monies or anything as of yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, what was the timeframe as far as the consultation process? Perhaps it would be better after the consultation process for them to come as a group back to council after they've discussed it with all the different organizations that are potentially involved. And there seems to be, from the list of the letter, probably at least half a dozen that they'd have to consult with because they're going to have to come up with some kind of consensus as to what should or shouldn't happen. And it looks like there will be some associated cost. So, you know, I don't have a problem with what they're proposing. It's just that I hope that there's a thorough dialogue and discussion because there's a lot of groups that have historically put time and energy and some resources in, into what's currently there right now. And also, there's the issue of parking. Because parking is, is being utilized, or that space is being utilized for parking purposes when there's overflow at the museum or any other event in Suk. And I just wonder if that's going to be discussed.
Well, I think I heard in Counselor Parkinson's presentation that it was a, it was a project with the museum as well. They were involved with MOTI. Is that correct?
That's correct. They have spoken with member, I think he's the president of Rotary. They've, with the museum member, Ken Rayvalls, and with MOT. And MOT said that they saw no problems with it, from what they have said.
Yep. And when I initially talked to Mr. Farmer, he said the same thing, is that it would be a joint project with all of the stakeholders identified at the front end. Well, there, I, and go back to Counselor Parkinson's comments. I think what they're looking from us is an endorsement in principle, whether we are interested as a council to move forward with a gateway revitalization project. I believe that's it. I'm paraphrasing it, but. Okay.
Yes, thank you. I'm prepared for, to make a recommendation from you. I mean, we can't endorse or do, make any decisions as a committee, unfortunately. We're not meeting as a council right now. But I think it would be great to have their direct staff or maybe through Counselor Parkinson to have them come to a council meeting and present their idea. And then at that point, we'll be at a council meeting so we can make an official endorsement.
Okay. So Ms. Sprinkling, nothing else required for us tonight, is there? Perfect. Okay. No, 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 okay, got it. Now, is there public input onto this piece? No, there isn't. Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any comments? Thank you. Okay. So the last piece of agenda tonight is public input on any relevant issues. We have a 10-minute public input period, limited to about two minutes approximately per person to speak. So anyways, I'll invite members of the public to come to public input.
I'll jump up first. I'm Linda Slater. I'm, I live on Townsend Road and I'm almost a local. I think I've been here 35 or almost 40 years. Not quite, I know. So anyhow, my, I'm here to talk about the proposed funding withdrawal from the arts. And I just was going to give you, I'll read what I have to say. It's about fundraising. Anyways, I'm, I've been a fundraiser in Suk via the Suk PACs, including Suk Elementary, Journey, Edward Milne, both of my kids going through school, through Suk Minor Hockey, Suk Minor Fastball, Suk Fall Fair, Children's Garden Club. I've been volunteering for many years. Anyways, a couple of years ago, my sister asked me if I would help her at her school with an art project. She had grade twos and up at Bear Mountain. So I said, "Sure, okay. Tell me how to get there." So I went to this brand-new school, Suk District 61. I went in the front door and I'm going, "Wow, this is a brand-new school." It's got everything. And I went by the music room. There was all sorts of amazing instruments and there was a stage and there were all these costumes. And I was just like blown away because I was going through the halls of Suk Elementary for all these years and didn't ever see anything like that there. And I said to my sister, I said, "Wow, is this really Suk, just 61?" And she said, "Well, yes, but we have an active PAC." It was like a slap in the face because those people have money to donate back to the school. Where here in this community, our businesses are very willing to help, but every single organization asks them for money. So I'm pleading to the council to please, don't expect everybody to fundraise because it's just not possible to raise all these funds. And the Arts Council and the Fine Arts, we bring in, all of our money goes to bringing in people to Suk, like they said tonight. Okay, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Slater.
Ellen Lures, 5526 Suk Road. I saw, excuse me, at the, about the supplementary information about the signs. So I brought my sign, which I, was approved by council a year ago, which took two years to come together, which the talk about tonight was about branding Suk. It was to promote the fine arts and all the other groups, art groups, and to brand Suk. I think that we should be discussing with, along with the Lions, the interest in putting up a sign and the area. I went through a lot of work on this and a digital sign and getting all the prices and a spot to put it, of work with staff where it could be done. Got approval from the Ministry of Transportation where it could be done. It's all here. It's all ready to go. And if the Lions would like to work along with us, they're welcome to. I've expended a lot of energy in this. And it's, and it would be, and it would be for all the groups to advertise on. So we don't have to spend all our energy, our monies, putting up signs. It takes a lot of volunteer work to do that. And that was the whole idea behind this because I've seen groups come here for the last 10 years, coming forward and asking council for money to, basically to advertise, generally speaking. So this sign would cover all of that. And it could also bring income.
Yes, yes, Ms. Lures, if you remember, I was one of those people who supported that.
Yes, I know.
So I think I could ask you to touch base with Counselor Parkinson and, because she'll be talking with our friends at the Lions Group, et cetera. Would you be interested in that, Ms. Parkinson? And at least we could present the idea to them and maybe there's a way for it to integrate into that project.
Absolutely. And I had talked to them before, so.
Thank you.
They probably forgot about it. And I also have a presentation that I like to make as well.
Okay.
This is, I know.
You're into your two minutes now.
I know. This is the second two minutes. Okay. The arts are a central part of our cultures. Every nation is defined by its culture, which are the arts of music, architecture, sculpture, paintings, food, dancing, performing arts of theater and song, crafting and writing and needlework. The first thing we hand our children is a crayon or a pencil. We find some object which we praise them on and we teach them songs and poems and read them stories. The basis of our beings are entrenched in all the arts. If any of you attended the last two craft fairs, you would have been impressed by the creativity of local people with wood, fabric, glass, ceramics, natural materials, et cetera, and the economy created around that. Something just so simple. The Suk Fine Arts Show draws many people from near and far and of varied backgrounds to enjoy the amazing talents of so many. The difficulty for during the arts is that there are just so many talented folks. The Suk Fall Fair encourages the arts through literary arts, photography, needlework, hobbies, art, flowers, et cetera. Each community is defined by its uniqueness, as you heard tonight. For many years, we were defined as a logging town. That in itself lent us to many art opportunities, i.e. the logging pole, logging paintings, et cetera. Council has defined us as wild by nature. How to define our theme is through art. Whether it's carvings, paintings, or photos, we define ourselves through our art. We are created to be creative. If any council member had an opportunity to travel Europe to experience the fresco sculptures, architecture, opera, jewelry, and more, you would understand that those are the arts supported in those countries which define them. We can look at those underdeveloped nations and see how opportunities are given to those people to enable them to sell their artwork, carvings, paintings, and jewelry around the world to better their opportunities in their countries. Yet, we deny the same opportunities to those in this country to define themselves through art and to enable an economy developing through the art. If council has some questions around how monies are distributed or acquired, then I suggest they sit down and work with the arts communities, as they suggested in there, working with the willing people. That would be everyone. To better facilitate their energies and finance, but don't deny us the opportunities which they have strived so hard for with monies from the B.C. Arts Council to continue to grow our cultural heritage. I would hope that we would define ourselves a little better than Tim Horton's Double-Double in Hockey Night in Canada. Thank you.
How do I follow that tourism act? I mean, that was incredible. My name is, pardon?
Oh, no, you got, yeah, talk close to, there you go.
Talk close, okay. Or move it closer?
It's good, it's good.
Thank you. My name's Maureen Savoy. I'm a concerned citizen and taxpayer, have been here for over 24 years. But I'm also the secretary for the Suk Community Arts Council. And I would like to thank our acting mayor, Kevin Pearson, and our corporate officer, Bonnie Sprinkling, for their prompt and positive response to our query about members of the arts community's right to speak at the Committee of the Whole tonight. Now, I'm here to respond to the recommendations of the Grant Review Committee to slash funding for the arts in Suk, particularly the Suk Community Arts Council, to remove that funding. My feeling is that this committee of three individuals, previously four, neglected to show due diligence in reaching their decisions. They seem not to be aware of the major impacts these cuts will have on the District of Suk's reputation as a welcoming arts community, the financial loss to local businesses, and loss of employment opportunities for the people of Suk. Counselor Ray suggested, and I'm sorry she's not here tonight to hear all of these wonderful things that are going on. She asked us to review Section K of the grant policy. And in this, she refers to her recommendations to the other grant committee members. And it's basically saying that in order to eliminate indirect funding, a grant will not be issued to an organization that in turn issues grants to other organizations unless the applicant can demonstrate to the committee that grant monies received from the District of Suk will not be used to fund grants to other organizations. Now, we were able to show in all of the documentation provided to the grant committee that we do not distribute grants to other organizations from the district grant of $4,000. That doesn't even cover all the costs of all of our events held here in Suk. Through our membership fees, our hanging fees, we supplement the district grant to cover these additional costs and administration expenses. Now, the matching grant from the B.C. Arts Council has been used, one, sponsorship. Now, the matching grant from the B.C. Arts Council has been used, one, sponsorship to the order of $1,500 to an artist at the Suk Fine Arts Show. This has been gone going since before 2007. And the Community Arts Council has been listed in the Fine Arts catalog for these shows as a sponsor, not a grantor. This was and is not a grant. $1,500 has been given to the Suk Philharmonic Orchestra as their, over their sponsorship for the last few years. They lost their sponsorship from Butler Brothers and between us, we agreed that we would sponsor them for a period of five years. This was and is not a grant. And the Suk Community Arts Council does issue financial assistance to deserving individual members and group members of no more than $250 each to a total of $1,000 per year if we get asked and they provide information. Have I hit two minutes? The loss of our matching grant from the B.C. Arts Council means our sponsorship of the Suk Fine Arts Society ends. An example of the consequences this brings, Appetite for Arts is the first to go. And it's already been canceled. This in turn means no funding for the Food Bank and the youth art sponsorships from that event. It means the loss of income for the local businesses involved. It means a loss of income to the Prestige, who employ local people. And on and on it goes. No funding from them means no matching funds for Appetite for Art, and that's just one example. What the Grants Committee fails to understand is the money all goes back into the community and then some. Hundreds of volunteers participate in bringing these events to fruition, such a small investment, about 33 cents per man, woman and child resident of Suk, on the part of the district, creates a huge benefit financially and culturally to our community. I implore the council of the District of Suk to not accept the recommendations of the Grants Review Committee, with respect to the arts community of Suk. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We're getting near the end of our 10 minutes, okay?
Am I? Oh, great.
Yeah, okay, good.
I'm the closing act.
Yeah, you're the closing act.
I'm Patrick Grove, volunteer citizen.
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear you.
Patrick Grove.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not an artist. I'm married to an artist. It's the joy of my life. But I'm here to, again, urge council to, to not accept the recommendations and to approve the funding both for the Arts Council and for the Suk Fine Arts Show. And it's on totally not artistic benefits. I, other people here are way smarter, can talk about the arts. Some of it just comes down to fairness. That's taxpayers' money, you're all aware of that and, and I've heard all of you eloquently speak about taxpayers' money. The, the Suk Fine Arts Group works, is an umbrella group that feeds into over 1,000 performing artists, 3D artists, all sorts of the different ways of, of talking about arts, every way you can think of it. And, you know, that's one out of every 15 or 16 people in town here. These people here, there's a lot of them right behind me. There are people here, and I'm, I'm looking at some, they work hundreds. Some of them approach 1,000 volunteer hours a person in a year. And they're being told they'd go out and raise funds. You can always get a couple more dollars and they try hard, they do raise money. But to invest of your time is irreplaceable. And for the, for the council, over $4,000 is the, is the matching grant they're looking for. We talk about leveraging funds. $4,000 from you becomes $8,000 in total when, when the B.C. Arts community kicks in. There are over 200 organizations in B.C. that will get funding from the B.C. Arts Council. There are over 70 of those have their own community center that has an arts facility in it. And of course, as we all know, we have nothing. Fairness. I, it's been more than 20 years since my kids played junior hockey. It's, I've ne, I, I should be ashamed, but I'm not. I've never been in the li, I'm a well-read person, but I've never been in our local library. And yet I support the funding for that and without, without reservation, I support funding for minor hockey. We subsidize it and the swim, for swimming and the minor hockey, we, we subsidize recreation in town for over a million bucks a year. $4,000, will that cover a single sea park, or a, a single regional employee for a full month? I don't think so. You put it in with all as, as fertilizer for all the effort that these people do as volunteers and Suk gets huge value. Now, the Suk Fine Arts Society, Suk Fine Arts, I just want to sort of remind people, I mean, again, a lot of these people do the work, it's the thing we can be most proud of. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think seven years ago, maybe eight, they almost went out of existence because they were so short of funds and they went back to and refocused and got new leadership and got recommitment from here. So the fact that they've made a little bit of a surplus, a lot of which goes back into the arts community and, and Suk, you know, we shouldn't be holding that against them and saying, well, we're not giving you a funding because you're too well off. We spend all this money on everything else for the little bit, tiny bit of money, $4,000 and, and $7,000? $3,500. $3,500. With respect, I would be ashamed if council didn't approve those.
How can I, how, okay.
One minute, real fast.
Now, you're the real closing act.
I'm the closing act tonight. I'm Loretta Bor camp. From the artist etchings on the walls of caves thousands of years ago to the artist works of today here in Suk, I'd like to quote from The Life of Pi by Jan Martel. "If we citizens do not support our artists, then we sacrifice our imagination on the altar of crude reality and we end up believing in nothing but worthless dreams. Do not cut the funding. But if you're desperate for money, cut the $9,000 you spend on doggy poop bags." Thank you.
And a good closing act it was. Thank, thank, thank you, everyone, for, tonight. I have a motion, we need a motion to adjourn now, Ms. Sprinkling, and then go in camera. Okay, thank you. So can I have a motion? Second. All those in favor? Thank you.